Please call the roll.
Mr. Frery?
Here.
Mr. Latif?
Here.
Mr. Trimarki? Mr. Daly?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Hope?
Here.
Chairperson McGuinness?
Here.
Ms. Pacheco?
Here.
Our first order of business is approval of the minutes from the December meeting. Is there anyone who'd like to make a motion?
Motion.
The motion's been made. Is there anyone who'd like to second it?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, would the clerk please call?
Mr. Frery?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
I'm staying.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Chairperson McGuinness?
Yes. The minutes were approved. Before we call our first case, I'd just like to go over a few things. So when your case is called, you'll be asked to come to the podium to state your name and address, and then tell us about your case. We need you to speak into the microphone for several reasons. First, this is a hybrid meeting. As you saw when we called the roll, there are several board members who are joining us from home, and we also have several members of the community watching from home and participating from home. They can't hear us unless we're speaking into our microphones, so that's very important. Secondly, the minutes are done through the recording of the meeting, and if you're not speaking into the microphone, we can't put those comments into the minutes. If you're here and you've come to speak about a project that you're just commenting on either for or against, we also need you to state your name and address for the record, and we also need you to speak into the microphone. When you're presenting your case, my colleagues and I will be asking a variety of questions. We have reviewed the packets, and in many cases, we have visited the sites. We are asking these questions because we're trying to best understand the project before us and what's been done to mitigate the need for the variances. We understand that for most residents, you're not familiar with planning terms and zoning terms, and we get that, and we'll be patient. Our goal, though, is to best understand each project in order to make the most prudent decision. We strive to be respectful of all those who come before us. As Niskuna is a diverse community with people living here from around the world, this board does understand that for some who come before us, we're speaking to you in a language that's not your native language. We'll do our best to give you enough time to process this information, the questions that we're asking you. Would the clerk call the first case, please?
The appeal of Mohammed Sharapour for a variance from Section 220-25B1A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 1009 Catherine Woods Boulevard, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district to maintain a six-foot fence which exceeds the height limit in both side yards. Fence Section 220-25B1A permits the maximum height for fences located in the front and side yards to be four feet. As constructed, a six-foot high fence is located in both side yards. Therefore, a two-foot height variance is required. Eight notices were mailed in December. Two responses were read into the record in December.
Thank you. You can come up to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us about the case. I know there's been some changes since you were last here.
Yes, thank you. My name is Mohammed Sharapour from 1009 Catherine Woods Boulevard Avenue, Niskuna, New York, 12309. I was here on January, month of January 15th for variance of the fence. I went through with my builder. I spoke with him back and forth. He said, "Go back to the town, ask them." It's all over his ditch, up and down. Now we fix this fence, even the front two-door, two-side, which is, I spent like $24,000, $12,12, $24. He say, "If we can take this," is a lot of stone, 18 inches under the stone, is again, is almost four feet. Go there and ask them. But the fences to my neighbor was no choice because of the space-wise. But anyway, he say, "Fesco fence." We went with my builder, we went to Fesco fence. He say, "We make possible to remove the fence from the neighbor and put it to your property," which is a lot of work, but I say, "Yes." They give me statement and they order the fence and the new post, those thing.
Is that stairway there or not there, to the, close to the house?
I believe that that's...
Because if that stairway is as depicted on the map that we have in front of us, he's going to need a variance no matter what, even if we move it back. Because he's not going to be able to attach it to the back corner, correct, Laura?
Sorry, John, what was the question?
I'm saying he's going to need a variance no matter what if the drawing is correct, because there's stairs that are integrated into the back corner of the property where Mr. Frery is indicating to move the gate to, right?
To keep it six feet, you would. You know, your variance is specific to where the fence is, so you could theoretically lessen the variance if you move it a little.
You can move it closer, but you're still going to need some variance over there, right?
You would, I would say, probably because of the stairs. Although, the building inspectors will tolerate like a couple inches, but not a lot. Like, it has to be very, like, you know, like if there's like a rain gutter, I think there's like a four-inch tolerance for like the rear corner of the house. It's not a lot.
Okay, thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Laura.
Are there other questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Sheriff Por, this is Katrina Pacheco. I also want to understand, as we are looking at that corner of the house, if we're standing on the driveway, and I will say I have not visited the site, so I don't know exactly what this looks like. If I'm facing your house and looking at the garage doors on the left, and the gate and the fence are on my right-hand side, is there any other door on that wall?
No other door, just the garage door.
And the steps that appear to be at the corner of the house, are they going up or down into the backyard?
Down to the backyard.
Down to the backyard?
Yeah.
So...
From the building, I'm sorry, from the building, I have only six feet to the end of the... This is, for me, is not reasonable to move the gate. Then I don't have, I don't have enough room to turn and go to the backyard.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand if there were a way to, as Mr. Hope was suggesting, or one of the other board members was suggesting, if the whole fence were to move, you would still need a landing at the top of the stair to go down into your backyard. So that would be more construction that you're not planning to do, correct? You're not planning to move the stair?
No, this is nightmare to move for three inch. I live 30 years in Niskuna, I never went through this. I did all for my grandkids, otherwise I was not living here. After 30 years, this is... I have three houses, my both sons live in Niskuna. Did all legal stuff, but this is just the fences for my grandkids. If it's not like that, it's...
Okay, thank you.
It's very tough for me. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Are there any comments from the community, anyone wishing to be heard? Hearing none, is there a motion on this?
Hey Chairman, just while we're waiting on a motion, I just wanted to clarify, Katrina was here at the last meeting, and Mr. Trimarki came in late, so I think it would be appropriate to have her be called on this vote. And then at the next case, he can step in and take on the remaining two?
That sounds great.
Okay.
So we're looking for a motion, please.
Can we clarify what the motion we're making here? Because I know we have some changes, just want to make sure. So the fence is moving back to Mr. Sheriff Por property, but still gonna be, is it gonna need a variance if it moves back to his property? Because it's in the back? Because I want to make sure we're not voting on...
So that's this side up there? And the extent of the variance of the fence that would be moved is kind of highlighted in orange?
Right.
And it's just because, even though he moves it onto his property, there's still a portion of it that's in his side yard on that, like I call it the right side of the plot plan.
So there's the portion, what are we talking about? How many feet of the portion is required the variance for the six feet? Because...
On the left side?
Because all he's asking is for two feet. I just want to make sure we clarify this before we make a vote on it.
I'm just estimating, it's probably between 10 and 15 feet, you know, on the right side, along the one part of the L, and then probably like 15, 20 feet that would be like facing the road.
And this is a see-through fence, right?
It is a see-through fence, yes.
And this is the question to the council. I know last time we had similar situation on the fence. Can we make a stipulation that this fence will be only through, whatever? There's a name we used last time for the kind of fence. So this way, if the house was sold, the new owner won't be able to put some other kind of fence.
So the difference between this case and that case when we had the discussion was that case, the fence was much, much closer to the road. It was in the front and not the side yard. So I think you should shy away from doing that, as we don't do that typically. But that other situation was a unique situation because that was so close, the fence was so close to the road.
Thank you, Council. How about the other side, Laura? So what are we, what are we approving here? Sorry to do that to you, but I just want to clarify.
So on the left, it's probably about 30 feet, you know, that you're seeing broadside against the road. And then it's probably, you know, I would say 10 feet going on, well, it's probably even less than. I'd say probably five feet there that's perpendicular to the road on the left side.
Do we have a motion?
Madam Chairman, I'm going to move that we deny the variance for the following reasons. While I appreciate Mr. Sheriff Por's willingness to address the issue that we were confronted with in the last meeting regarding the fence being on the neighbor's property, and I appreciate his willingness to have somebody out to fix that and address it and remove that really from consideration. From my perspective, I think at least on the driveway side of this house, he has not provided us with what I would consider to be the least restrictive alternative to, while he could still have the six-foot fence. There are some alternatives, I think, that would allow him to not need a variance on that side. Quite familiar with this property. The driveway runs all the way back to the rear corner of the house, even if, in fact, he provided a small landing. I think if you look at the stairway, as I see, the stairway is designed to access the large rear patio porch area. There's a walkway in the back of the house. So I think there is a lesser alternative which would bring him within the zoning requirement and not require a variance on that side. I look at the other side, on the right side, he has far fewer options, if any, because of the issue of the retaining wall and the rear patio on that side. But I don't see this as being a change in the neighborhood. There's, there are fences of this sort and other varieties in the neighborhood. The problem is, is that this board is very critical, very particular in terms of granting variances of six-foot fences, and particularly in this instance, when we have some alternatives. So for those reasons, I'm going to move that we deny the variance.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I'm going to second it for the same reasons stated, because there is room that you can work over there. And I gave this deep thought, and it can be fixed. So those are the reasons why.
The motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Frery?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no on the motion with due respect to Mr. Frery. I think he had a good point about the applicant did have other alternative to move it and be able to do some justification. But I'm voting no, because again, the request is not substantial on one side, and it is substantial on the other side. So because the fence is already in place, but it doesn't mean that will allow the applicant to keep it without getting a permit first and checking with the town. But for all these reasons, I'm still voting no on the variance.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes, on the motion to deny the variance.
Mr. Hope?
Yes, I'll just note that one of the things that concerns me about this particular application is that the fence is up. And because of that, in my mind, putting the fence up, violation of the code, does amplify the element of the standard with respect to a self-created hardship. And although I'm sympathetic to the situation, I don't think that we should deviate from the standards we would normally apply to any other... we would normally apply to any other six-foot fence application based upon the fact that the fence is up. So in addition to the reasons put forward by Mr. Freary, I vote yes on this motion.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, and I would like to add for the applicant that this isn't the end of the road for you. I think you still have some options available to you and to look very carefully at what you can do on the side closest to the garages. For those reasons, I agree with the motion.
Chairperson McGinnis?
I, I'm voting no, but like my colleague, Mr. Daly, this was a very challenging one. I've been thinking a month about this. But like my colleague, Mr. Latif, I find that, you know, you did work with us on trying to mitigate the need for the variance by having the fence moved on the one side. And, you know, I'm, I'm voting no. Despite that, the the motion is approved, your variance is denied. Thank you for joining us tonight. I know you'll be in touch with the building department.
Will the clerk call the next case, please?
The appeal of Ingles and Associates LLP, agent for a variance from provisions of Niskuna Code Schedule IC, Part 1, R2 Resident, R2 District Schedule of supplementary regulations, Town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property at 1356 Balltown Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District for an application for sketch plan approval, five lots or more for a major subdivision of 18-town homes at the 5.3-acre property. Variances include the need for front yard setback, side yard setback, lot width, lot depth, lot area minimum, and lot maximum coverage. Schedule IC Part 1 lists the front yard setback for lots to be 30 feet. Three of the lots have front yard setbacks that are less. Because the lots are proposed as side-by-side townhomes, 18 lots will need a variance from the side setback on the common lot line. 14 lots will need the lot width requirements, or do not meet the lot width requirements of 80 feet. One lot does not meet the lot depth requirement, 100 feet. 14 lots do not meet the minimum lot area, 9,000 square feet. Four lots exceed the maximum coverage allowed for a lot, 30%. A total of 54 area variances are required. 29 notices were mailed out and we received six responses and planning board and county referrals.
At a regular Planning and Zoning Board Commission meeting held on January 10th, 2022, the planning board reviewed the appeal and made the following recommendations. Effect on the comprehensive plan. The board voted 6-1 that there was no effect on the comprehensive plan. The one dissenting voter stated they voted that the project does not have a negative effect on the comprehensive plan due to its inclusion of several non-conforming lot sizes. However, they did agree with the type of use of the property. The board noted that the current zoning classification will continue to have a residential usage and the project fulfills a current need for this type of housing within the town and the Town Center Overlay District. Townhomes are in allowed use in this R2 zoning district. They noted the negligible impact the traffic count data predicts for the surrounding area. The proposal generates less traffic than that of a full single-family home build-out. The development creates 18 new dwelling units, which is consistent with the number of single-family homes, 17, shown in the baseline single-family home site plan. A review of the town's comprehensive plan identified several areas of alignment, including Page 5 Introduction. Encourage housing development of various types, sizes, and costs to meet the needs of people at various stages of the life cycle, income, age levels, and household compositions. New development shall not compromise the integrity of the surrounding neighborhoods. The development of 18 townhomes will add housing diversity within the R2 zoning district. Page 28 Issue pedestrian movement. In May of 2020, sorry, 2002, the town enacted Local Law Number 3, the Sidewalk Installation Maintenance and Repair Law that promotes the maintenance of safe and adequate sidewalks for pedestrian use. Recently, the planning board has required developers to install new sidewalks in areas where they connect to existing sidewalks. The development will include new sidewalks to support pedestrian movement along Balltown Road and along Van Antwerp Road. In addition, pedestrian traffic will be able to occur through this development, which connects Balltown Road to Van Antwerp Road. Pages 91 and 94 Issue Area Land Use Subarea B5. The Town Center is located in this subarea. The town has adopted the Town Center Overlay District, which includes design standards for any type of construction or renovation for any building located in the Town Center Overlay District. The town should continue to uphold the existing zoning standards in places that encourage pedestrian-friendly development. This submittal supports pedestrian movement and is an allowable use within the R2 district. Page 98 Issue Housing Diversity. The majority of Niskuna's development is single-family residences. Single-family homes include condominiums and townhomes. Resident calls to the planning office and developer market research indicate a need for more townhomes and other age-in-place living options within the town. This project supports that need. Suitability of use. The planning board voted 7-0 that this is a suitable use. It maintains the residential use of the parcel by creating 18 townhome units, which is nearly identical to the 17 R2 single-family dwelling units shown in the baseline site plan. The project site sits between two CN zones, making it an ideal location for harmonious transition to residential properties and housing diversity. The creation of owner-occupied dwelling units is something the town is striving for. It leaves a large portion of the land as open space, which is desirable. Townhomes are allowed in the R2 zoning district, but specific details such as common side setback specifics are not incorporated into the zoning code. The current fourth revision of the plan has reduced the number of variances since the inception of the project from 103 to revision 254. 18 of the 54 variances are due to the shared lot line inherent in townhomes and no setback variances are needed to any contiguous properties. Five aging single-family homes will be demolished and redeveloped as part of this proposal. The project retains a larger section of the wooded area in the town center than a traditional single-family home subdivision design would. The redevelopment of the five current single-family homes reduces the number of curb cuts on Balltown Road and Van Antwerp Road from eight to two. The design minimizes cut-through traffic by providing a tortuous path from Balltown Road to Van Antwerp Road. Recommendation, the board voted 7-0 to recommend the zoning board approve all of the variances attached. This connected county referral, we got two of them actually because of the reduction in variances. But in both cases, he had written modify conditionally approved. New York State Department of Transportation and Schenectady County Department of Engineering and Public Works will need approvals for the work in the state and county right of way. And then I have a variety of comments, but some people may be on the line. So I'll read their names and if they want to read their comments, but if not, I'll read them. So the first comment I have is from Daryl Bray. Is he joining us remotely? Mrs. Robertson and members of the ZBA, I am writing regarding the property at 1356 Balltown Road. I am very concerned about several aspects of this development and feel very strongly they should not be given a variance to exceed the average density they are currently zoned, which I believe is 16 or single, 16 or 17 single-family homes. Increasing the density while also changing the housing type to townhomes is a step too far. If they are going to change the zoning to townhomes, they need to stay under the density that would be prescribed by the current zoning. Additionally, while the density may be 16 or 17 single-family homes on paper, homes are not built on paper. And if you were to actually put in single-family homes and account for the significant amount of water and wetlands on the property, I would be surprised if you could actually get 14 homes. Being that as it is, I believe that if you are going to grant the waiver for townhomes, the development should be limited to 14 units and seven buildings. I also have a strong negative reaction to all the variances required for lot size, lot coverage, and setbacks. These will really clash with the neighborhood aesthetic and damage the neighborhood feel. If they reduce the number of units to 14, this may be remedied. Thank you, Daryl Bray, 1420 Van Antwerp Road. The next letter I have is from Karen Muniz, 2329 Barcelona Road. Karen, are you on the line? Thank you for your time and the opportunity to present my thoughts and concerns to the Zoning Board of Appeals regarding the proposed subdivision located at 1360 Balltown Road and 1357 Van Antwerp Road. I am pleased that the developer BR Holding LLC, in their most recent application to the Niskuna Planning Board, decided to reduce the number of townhomes proposed for this parcel of land. I am hopeful that a project at this location will advance in a manner which will serve the developer, the town of Niskuna, and the community at large, specifically for maintaining the wonderful quality of life the adjacent neighborhoods share, which is why we bought homes here and continue to love living in Niskuna. I want to thank the planning board for being open-minded and receptive to the concerns of the residents since the initial proposal put forth in 2017 and thoughtful in subsequent modifications to plans. I look forward to a satisfactory solution for all parties. As a Barcelona, Barcelona Road homeowner, however, I do have issues that I would like the Zoning Board of Appeals to kindly take into consideration, conduct appropriate studies for, and respond to. According to documents provided by the developer, I reference the following. The proposed townhome subdivision will include private road connections at Balltown Road and Van Antwerp Road. There will be 1.3 acres of open space that will provide for stormwater management, vegetated buffer, and recreation areas for residents. The current site consists mainly of deciduous forest and existing residences along Balltown and Van Antwerp Road. There will be additional runoff generated from the proposed building, sidewalks, roads, and other impervious surfaces compared to the existing conditions. Stormwater management practices will be designed to treat and offset any additional quality of runoff. A full SWIP Storm Water Pollution Protection Plan will be prepared for the project, demonstrating that the proposed development will not result in a negative impact on the adjacent properties. One, residents along Barcelona Road and the adjacent streets have valid worries about the direction of water runoff and possible overflow from this parcel, including meltwater, rain, and stormwater. When existing green space and forest is replaced with townhomes, a road, parking area, and sidewalks. Developer admits there will be additional runoff generated from the proposed building, sidewalks, roads, and other impervious surfaces compared to the existing conditions. As it is my understanding that the water retention plan being proposed will privately own stormwater management systems that will not place a burden or tie into the existing town of Niskuna sewer infrastructure, I ask that the zoning board conduct a detailed engineering analysis as to the impact of this retention plan will have to surrounding homes and streets before issuing a final consent. I believe the subject of water management needs to be addressed as a priority item and that development of this subdivision should be in line with what the town's sewer infrastructure can appropriately support, privately owned or not. The flooding of home basements and yards is a very real problem to residents on Barcelona Road. I ask how much more water and subsequent homeowners expend should we, our homes and properties, be expected to absorb? Two, increased traffic congestion caused by entering, exiting, turning to, and from Balltown Road and the proposed project is a concern. The main roadways in Niskuna are overburdened and traffic is visibly and routinely backed up along the stretch from Knott Street to Route 7 and beyond in both directions during peak traffic time. Traffic has increased over the past several years to the point where residents avoid turning onto Balltown Road whenever possible and instead use side streets, thus increasing the vehicular burden to those roads. Therefore, I ask the zoning board to further scrutinize the traffic impact to include emergency vehicles, snowplows, trash removal, and school buses. The impact of increased traffic should naturally take into consideration pedestrians crossing Balltown Road and the conditions of existing sidewalks. One literally takes one life into one's hands crossing. My point being emphasized with the numerous vehicular accidents occurring near the corner of Barcelona and several individuals who have been hit in recent years. As traffic will obviously continue to increase with new construction, will the town install a crosswalk with a dedicated light on the long stretch of Balltown Road between Van Antwerp and Knott Street? The CVS lot continues to be used as a cut-through between Van Antwerp and Balltown for both vehiculars, no, vehicles and pedestrians. So at the very least, should the CVS corner be reconfigured to better accommodate pedestrians with a more appropriate and safe crosswalk with curb cuts for bikes, strollers, and wheelchairs? I realize that any solution will incur a cost to taxpayers. In closing, we are the elderly, those with young families, the disabled, and a wide mix of ethnic groups who love our unique community. We walk, jog, run, stroll, and wheel on a daily basis year-round. That being said, we realize the character of the neighborhood would certainly change with any new construction and removal of the last vestige of flora and fauna. We just want to make sure it is the right step forward, preserving both the character of our old Niskuna neighborhood while meeting the desire of the town of Niskuna to expand. Thank you for your attention, Karen Muniz, 2329 Barcelona Road. The next email is from Chris Doggius. He writes, "We will not be able to attend the meeting tomorrow night, but would like our voice heard on the appeal for the townhouse variances on 1356 Balltown Road, Niskuna, New York. My name is Chris Doggius and I reside at 2420 Heartland Street, adjacent to the proposed townhouse lot. I reviewed the paperwork sent out and also the documents online, and I agree it is a better proposal set forth, but still feel this is too much for the area and have some concerns. The amount of traffic from this cluster of homes is quite heavy and will cause not only traffic congestion, but also raise the noise level in our neighborhood. Concerns of the runoff and environmental impact, as the majority of this land is trees, and notes indicate that no anticipated adverse physical or environmental impact to the area, but no mention of any studies done to ensure this. Seems like a lot of variances are being stretched to accommodate as many units as possible, which in turn will set new precedents if allowed. As you all know, the variances are very important to keep the town safe and appealing for many generations to come. Another item I didn't see mentioned or addressed would be the surrounding property value and how that would affect us. Thank you for your time, Chris Doggius." The next email I have is from Sue McKinney. Is Sue McKinney on the line? "I am Sue McKinney and I live at 2337 Barcelona Road. I had originally asked to speak at the virtual meeting tonight, but I am unable to do so now. So I'm sending you my thoughts and concerns, hopefully to be asked and discussed at tonight's meeting based on this letter. This concerns the proposed subdivision of Balltown Road between CVS and Channel 6 CBS. My biggest concern is the water table and how it will further impact our homes' foundations and basements on Barcelona and Almeria Road. We definitely live downhill from this proposed, from this building proposal, evidenced simply by standing on the top of Barcelona where it intersects with Balltown Road. Since I have lived here in the past three years, several of my neighbors' basements have flooded from the more virulent rainstorms that climate change has caused. Some neighbors have told me that they have never had water in their basements before. Our fire department has been called on several occasions to pump out these floods. They may keep records, you can access to verify the increased need. I have been one of the lucky ones whose basement hasn't flooded, but I fear that this building subdivision would worsen an already rising water table and storm sewer drainage problem and my basement may begin to flood. My elderly next-door neighbor told me that during the rainstorm the end of this past week, his some, his some pump was overflowing and could not keep up. And he had to employ a second emergency pool pump, which kept draining throughout the day after the storm. And two years ago, the very elderly woman on the other side of me had a huge flood in her basement when she was in the hospital. And the neighbors luckily checked her basement and called the fire department for her to pump out. So my questions are, is there a recent water flow evaluation done by the independent firm not associated with the builder? And what type of drainage will be engineered to prevent our neighborhood from getting flooded? What improvements can we make to our storm sewer drainage now? Thank you in advance for considering our concerns and hopefully adding them to this evening's discussion." This next letter is from Bruce Trachtenberg. Dear Zoning Board of Appeals, as the owner of 2350 Barcelona Road and the purchaser of 2351 Barcelona, Barcelona Road in Niskuna, both of which are on the corners of Balltown Road, I must oppose the proposed subdivision which runs from Balltown Road to Van Antwerp Road. The proposal includes entrance and egress to Balltown Road into and out to an already overtaxed road that has huge amounts of cars, trucks, and buses that create long lines of cars and long delays many times each day. The map also shows a gated emergency exit into a commercial establishment. For any development of this plan, lots numbered one through eight should be open space area instead of housing, with a few more units in the area designated 22 on the map, and the entrance and egress onto Balltown Road must be eliminated. The modest two-lane Van Antwerp Road would have to absorb the traffic. Perhaps another emergency exit could be established for WRGB's extension to Almeria. Thank you for your consideration, Bruce Trachtenberg." While I do have a home office by permit in the downstairs of my home, I am semi-retired and have few professional business guests. and have few professional business guests. I already have too many people turning around in my Barcelona Road parking lot and expect this new subdivision will mean many more uninvited users." And then the last comment I have is from Mike Shenfield. I do believe I saw him join online.
Yes, Laura, I'm here.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Mike Shenfield. I'm at 1350 Van Antwerp Road. We've been involved in this project, looking at it over the last several months. I do oppose what they're currently proposing on, and the number of variances. I feel that it still should comply with R2 zoning and be reduced the number of buildings, I think that Daryl mentioned, to reduce the number of variances overall. I feel that right currently with the number of buildings they have will affect our neighborhoods on both Balltown and Van Antwerp Road. I think the redesign needs to be further reduced to help the aesthetics and also the runoff that we get from, as neighbors have mentioned, from the water tables. So, that's what I'm currently looking at. What I feel is that these need to be rejected based on the number of variances they're requesting. I understand townhomes need a zero variance on the side yard, but the rest of them should be minimized further down to make the neighborhoods more congeal with old Niskuna signs. Thank you.
Okay, just want to note, thank you, Mr. Chico, for staying with us for the last case, and joining us for this case is Mr. Tri Marti. You may now introduce yourself and present your case.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, this is the longest, I think, I've ever stood before I started speaking in a case such as this. Laura, thank you for reading the comments and the recommendations from the Planning Board, obviously also from the county planning level. You didn't say anything about the CAC, but they also recommended 4 to 0 to move positively on this proposal after several meetings and modifications of the plan. So, let me start by saying that I am not Dave Engels. I am Victor Capanera. I'm an attorney. I represent the owner of the property, which is Niskuna BR Holding CO LLC. Normally, my clients would be with me tonight, but due to COVID protocol, they're with us virtually. We have Tim Miller, we have Robert Miller, and of course, the famous Dave Engels from Engels &amp; Associates is also, there he is, virtually. So, he'll be able to answer any questions the board might have relative to any of the issues pertaining to his engineering work that he's done on this project, which he's been working on for about five years, starting in 2017, culminating with tonight's presentation. First of all, we should all know some of the factors relative to this parcel. Number one, it sits on 5.3 acres of land. The existing conditions show that it has frontage, obviously, on Balltown, as you can see from the foamboard that I have in front of you, as well as Van Antwerp. And on the property are existing five single-family dwellings. You probably can't see them through here, but there are five single-family dwellings, including Balltown and Van Antwerp. Each has a separate curb cut, four on Balltown and one on Van Antwerp. For the record, the property is in a R2 zoning district. This is a zoning district that allows townhomes. However, this town does not have specific zoning for townhomes. What do I mean by that? If you look at other municipalities, they'll have a cluster type of zoning where they'll say, on a particular piece of property, you can develop it, but by clustering the development, much the same as this, you're creating more of an open space such that the lots are going to be smaller, the setbacks are going to be less. But we don't have that in the town. So, we have to work within the parameters of what's allowed in this R2 zone, which basically is single-family homes. And Laura has done a very, very nice job in putting together the table which establishes what the side yard setbacks are required in the zone, what the area is, 9,000 square feet, front yard, et cetera. So, this parcel is the only parcel in the town overlay district that remains R2. The parcel is surrounded by CN zoning to the north, which is the WRGB property that you see on the site plan to the north that I'm pointing to. To the south, we have a CN district, which is currently the CVS Pharmacy, which I'm pointing to right here. And to the northeast, we have the R3 multifamily zoning district, which is Van Antwerp Village Apartments. So, this is a unique parcel, given the properties that surround it, namely, commercial in the instances I mentioned. Obviously, there's residential off Van Antwerp and over on the other side of Balltown. So, our town master plan states that the property should remain R2, which is why my clients are not requesting a zoning change and proposing the development that complies with the existing permitted uses in this zone, namely, a townhome. Albeit, they're conjoined, as you can see here, and I'm going to get into that in a few minutes for the reasoning why we're here. So, David Engels, who has worked on this project since 2017, has designed a plan, and we've shown it to the Planning Board members, where you could conceptually utilize it for 17 single-family residential homes. However, we feel that townhomes are a better fit for the town and for this particular parcel, and it's a better option than 17 homes for several reasons. One, single-family townhomes address an immediate market need and diversifies the available housing need in the town of Niskuna. Two, single-family townhomes allow for more efficient use of the land, where we're proposing 1.3 plus or minus acres of open space which will provide for stormwater management, recreation areas for residents. Three, a single-family townhome reduces the curb cuts along both Balltown and Van Antwerp from currently 8 to 2. As you can see, the proposal, that was very, very in detail scrutinized by the Planning Board and its members, we revised the location of this particular egress. It was up here, it was moved down here, but you can see there's one here and one here. Single-family townhomes produce less traffic, including both AM and PM, and we had a traffic engineer, VHB Engineering, do a traffic study. We gave a copy of that study to the Planning Board, and that report should be part of this package. Is it, Laura? Dated October 6, even their report mentions 20 townhomes versus the proposal that we've reduced this to by 2, from 20 to 18, to lessen the amount of variances that we're asking for. So, as we all know, as members of this enlightened board, an area variance is a balancing test. That's what the courts have said, the benefits to the applicant versus the detriment to the surrounding property. We feel that when the board takes into consideration the totality of the circumstances of this case, many of which comments are included in what I mentioned a few minutes ago about the location of the property, the zoning of the property, the commercial uses that are on several sides of the property, that we feel, as does the Planning Board, after they heard from me on five different occasions over the last five or six months, and the Conservation Advisory Committee, that this is the appropriate use for this property. Noted, I mentioned this a few minutes ago, our zoning code, your zoning code, does not have a section relating to townhomes. Therefore, in this R2 medium-density residential, it doesn't factor in an area and setbacks considerations that would typically allow for this kind of use in terms of the setbacks, size of the lots, that I mentioned a moment ago. The majority of the requested variances really deal with the side setbacks along the common wall property lines, if you look at these. If you look at this proposal, you see that there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 buildings proposed. In those nine buildings, there's basically two townhomes. The townhomes are conjoined. What does that mean? That means that there is a requirement in your R2 zoning that there be a side yard setback. And it's in the table that Laura produced for everyone to look at. And so, if you look at that table, you will see that that side yard basically is zero. Now, when we reviewed this with the Planning Board, they really didn't have any concerns about that, acknowledging that the code does not specifically deal with a townhome use in an R2 zone. So, you've really got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 area variances, setback variances, that instead of having the required 15-foot of setback between the buildings, you have zero. Does everyone understand what I'm saying here? So, then we get into the other aspects of these variances, and we talk about the front yard setback. In an R2 zone, you're required to be 30 feet setback. In all but three instances, we meet that. However, in lots 1 and 2, I'm sorry, 2 and 3, which are right here, 2 and 3, they don't quite meet the 30-foot setback. They're 20 feet five, and the reason is, the road comes in. And the road distance between the edge of pavement and the building is 20.5 feet instead of the required 30. In lot 16, which is this lot right here, the only area where it doesn't meet the 30-foot setback is here where the curbs or the road comes in, and that measurement is 22.5. So, it's about seven and a half feet. All the rest exceeds the requirement of the front yard setback. Then you get into the widths. As we know, in an R2 zone, the minimum width requirement is 80 feet. And if you look at the table, you'll see that many of these are 46, 54, and of course, the reasoning is because of what I call the clustering of this development to accommodate townhome use. Clustering means you bring the buildings closer together in order to enjoy space that we're proposing over here, which is a 1.3 acre area.
I'm just going to ask you to pause for a second. Laura, can you share your screen so that people who are at home can see when he's pointing, they can see at least the map that he's pointing to?
Yes, I will. And I did just, I noticed that there were some people who emailed me the login, and just to let them know that they'll have a chance to speak later. I was only reading the letters.
Correct.
Yeah.
Once we get it up on the screen, you can...
It's a challenge doing these meetings now because you have person, and then you've got virtual. Okay. So, perhaps, Madam Chairman, when I'm speaking and pointing again, I'll go up to the... Well, I'll grab Laura's if I have to. So, those are the widths, and I've just explained the reasoning why, in this zone, which doesn't specifically deal with townhome use, there's a requirement for these width variance, area variance requirements. Obviously, the chart shows that we meet and exceed the depth requirements. And the area, in terms of the minimum 9,000 square feet, you can see that there's several lots that are close, but they don't specifically meet that 9,000 square feet. Likewise, with the three lots for the maximum coverage of 30%. So, that's essentially the reasoning why we propose this project as we have, and why we're asking the board's consideration in these variances. Let me just look at some other comments here. So, we believe, given our current statute and its, in my view, limitations in terms of not addressing specifically townhome use in this zoning district, that this proposed application will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties, which the Planning Board unanimously agreed with, as did the CAC. It's located near the intersection of Van Antwerp and Balltown, which, as we all know, just by looking and driving by this property, which I'm sure all of us have many, many times, is a mix of commercial, multifamily, and single-family residential uses. We feel strongly that the proposed townhomes will provide a transition between the commercial and residential uses, and no setback variances, none, are being requested to any adjoining properties. All of these variances that we're calling are all internal to the project. And in my experience, in front of many other zoning boards in many other towns and localities, is that if there were specific legislation or zoning on the townhomes, we probably wouldn't be in front, I wouldn't be in front of this board seeking this. But because of this situation, we are. So, the Planning Board also unanimously agreed or felt and recommended that the board approve these variances, only after many, many, many meetings that we've had. In fact, I must say, they're probably getting sick of seeing me every month after we came back time and time and time again. My clients, the Millers, when they first came in front of the Planning Board back in 2017, proposed 50 apartments and commercial use on this property, which obviously would have required use variances, and that's not what we're here for. But once they realized that that was not going anywhere, they pulled the application and started working on this project, and met with neighbors, and listened to their concerns. And, you know, their concerns had a lot to do with, they don't want apartments, they want home ownership, they were concerned about traffic, and things of that nature, that my clients, through the development of this plan with the help of Mr. Engel, came up with a plan we think is very viable, and obviously, so does the Planning Board and the CAC Board. So, in 2010, probably not many of you members were on the board. I don't know. Mr. Frery, maybe you were? The town of Niskuna determined that granting a use variance permitted commercial use in an R2 zone for the CVS Pharmacy. So, that pharmacy that I'm pointing to, that it's on the southerly part of this plan, you can barely see, was approved by this board... can barely see, was approved by this board by grant of a use variance, which everyone knows on this board is a completely different and far more Herculean task to get approved than area variances. We all know that. They also, in 1994, I'm not sure you remember back then, Mr. Frery, but in 1994, the zoning board appeals, this zoning board appeals, by decision granted variances, including use variances and area variances, to the construction of 12 townhomes, which is just north of this site on Balltown Road, as you drive up the road to the left before you get to the intersection of this street coming down to the town hall. That's 1437 Balltown Road. Again, the property is in an R2 zone. They were granted variances to allow those 12 townhomes to be constructed. The zoning board back then determined that there was no significant impacts associated with the townhome project at 1437 Balltown, which was also approved by the planning board, and obviously, it's there and it's been constructed. So essentially, we feel that this is a very, very culled-down project from where it originally started, even as few as a few months ago, when we had 20 townhomes proposed. I will also note that there is a couple of variances noted on this particular lot, which is 21, and it's... I guess I might have to... Thank you. In the table, it's noted that this is lot 21 right here, and it's this little odd-shaped lot. And there really wouldn't be any objection to merging these two together so as to create one large lot, so you would eliminate two small area variances on the table that is produced, was produced by Laura. If you look at lot 21, you see the requirements there, the depth 46 feet, in the area 3,391 square feet. Do you understand what I'm saying there, that we could merge those? This would merge with this lot, and there wouldn't be any need for those variances. So we believe that the requested variances should be granted based upon the entire record, including the pre-existing variances, both use and area variances that were granted to surrounding properties, namely the CVS, which is adjacent to the property, the 12-town home development, which is in close proximity at 1437 Balltown, the fact that there exists commercial uses, including CVS Pharmacy, WRGB, Van Antwerp Apartments. And this project, we feel, as does the planning board, is a very, very good transition between these residential uses located across the street and the commercial uses. And we feel, as does the planning board and the CAC, that this proposal would be in harmony with the spirit of the zoning code of the town of Niskuna. So Dave Engel, are you still on with us?
Yes, I am, Vic.
You've heard what I have presented to the board. Is there anything that you want to mention specifically dealing with some of the comments that were raised when Laura read some emails from some of the neighbors? I think Ms. McKinney made some questions, had some questions about water issues and concerns about that. I think there were a couple of the six folks that spoke about that.
Sure, I'd be glad to touch upon a couple of points that were brought up by the public, which are also some of the points we discussed with the planning board and the other, and the CAC. But before we do that, I just wanted to make it just a quick summary. Both Vic and Laura gave great summaries, I appreciate that. But we really did, it's been a long road to get to this board, as Victor stated, going back to our initial applications with the planning board back in 2017. At that point, there was 50 apartment units and 6,000 square feet of retail space, which there was quite a bit of public pushback on by the neighbors. The owners, Niskuna BR, they have met with the neighbors, and we've really worked on these plans, working with the neighbors, working, listening to their comments, listening to the comments of all the boards, including the planning board. And we think we have a great plan that we're presenting tonight, which again is a great reduction from the 50, the 50 units down to, and the retail down to, the 18 units. We thought we had a great plan at 20 units, but we did remove one building, one building over in the area of between buildings nine and 10, just south of the WRGB property line. There was, there was two buildings there that was reduced to one building, which aided in increasing the open space, which actually is up to 1.4 acres of open space, one large, one-acre lot. It shows as 0.9 on the plan, but it's actually one acre, which will be open space, which will be passive open space, as well as home to some of our stormwater management, which leads us into one of the main points from a technical standpoint, resonated very, very high on the list from the public. We have done some stormwater analysis for the site. We are bound by both Town Ordinance and New York State DEC regulations under their general permit for stormwater discharge, that there can be no increase in stormwater from this site. So the prevailing water flow is from north to south. It's not just a small portion of the existing homes drained toward Balltown Road, which does have a closed drainage system, which continues to drain and have a profile to the south, to the Balltown Road and Niskuna, or Balltown Road and Van Antwerp intersection. Likewise, all the stormwater sheets, a lot of the stormwater sheets off the WRGB parking lot, believe it or not, onto this site, also from Van Antwerp down toward the center of the site in the open space. That will be conducted through the site and out to the existing CVS drainage, closed drainage system, which continues into the state highway system, which there continues on into the city system, which goes into a big aqueduct of College Creek, and then on to the Mohawk River. But we are bound by those regulations to create what's known as a SWIP, the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. That plan addresses pre- and post-development runoff from the site, and requires us as the design professional to not allow any increase in flow from the site. So I just want to assure everyone that that's, that's a big technical item, and that will get further review as we get into, back to site plan and subdivision review with the planning board. So we understand the concerns of the neighbors, and we will be doing an analysis to assure that there's no impacts from any stormwater on adjacent properties. I think the other big item that people are concerned with, obviously, Balltown Road is a busy highway, has a high daily traffic count. One of the good aspects of this project, or mitigation aspects of this project, is that the townhomes actually result in about half of the traffic generation that would be realized when compared to the single-family option. So we looked at, or the Traffic Consultant, VHB, as Victor mentioned, looked at what would be the traffic generated from the 17 single-family homes versus, at that point, we still had 20 townhomes. And in the AM peak, basically, the 17 lots would generate 17 vehicles in the peak hour compared to now only eight, which will be probably even a little bit less down to seven, or about half of the cars generated in that peak hour. So, and then there's various routes. We have the two entrances, so that would be distributed between both the Balltown Road entrance and the Van Antwerp entrance. So I think, depending on the time of day and direction of travel, the residents will quickly find their, excuse me, find their path to the Balltown-Van Antwerp intersection. I think those were the two main comments. Again, there's been a substantial reduction in units from the original 50 down to the 20, then that was further reduced on, based on discussions with the planning board and the Conservation Advisory Council. Likewise, any of the respective variances that this board is looking at tonight have been reduced substantially. They were cut in about half from the original proposal as well. And then, not to, not to repeat Victor's analysis of those variances, they are all internal variances to the, to the lots that are within the subdivision and not to any adjacent property owners. I'd be glad to answer any other questions, if any members have any other...
Well, so I just, I want to explain to the public what's happening next. So the next step will be, the zoning board members will ask questions about the project, and then we will open up questioning to the public. So I do, are there any questions from members of the board?
Madam Chairman, before that starts, could I please ask my clients, who are the owners of this property, whether or not they want to add anything to the presentation?
Sure.
Specifically, I know that, I see that Bob is on, I don't know if Tim is on, but can, can you hear me, Bob and/or Tim? Unmute yourself if you are, if you can hear me. I saw Bob on...
Victor, this is Tim Miller, I can hear you fine.
Okay, Tim.
I have no, sorry, it took me a second to figure out how to do that.
That's okay.
I have nothing to add at this time.
This is Bob Jr., I as well had to figure out how to unmute. I have no, nothing to add as well.
Okay. Sorry, Madam Chairman, I just wanted to give them the opportunity.
Members of the board.
Okay, I got a couple of questions, and Mr. Engel, I think you answered some of the question for some of the letters we got. I'm Mr. Latif asking the question. There was, a letter was sent that they didn't have any issues with the townhouses, they had an issue with the numbers that you're having. And my question to you, in front of the planning board, you were able to reduce from 20 to 18 after massive meetings and discussions, and it seemed to me, one of the letters they were requesting, I don't think you referred to that, you referred to the water issues and so on, and they were talking about reducing it to 14. And if you can just give me an idea why you can't reduce it to 14, and is it possible that that could be reduced to minimize all these variances that you're requesting? And I do understand that you keep saying that this is internal between the properties that you're asking for those variances. But my concern is, as we got those letters, the public is concerned about some of the stuff, and one of them is, if you can talk to me about reducing the number of the townhouses, or maybe, Victor, you can answer that.
Dave, do you want to say anything?
Sure, I can take a shot at that. Again, there's quite a history to this project. I think you have to look at the whole history and where this project started with, with the 50 apartments and the 6,000 square feet, the numerous meetings with neighbors and the boards. We have really worked diligently to balance all of, all of the variables that were proposed to us, trying to generate a reasonable amount of development and number of units for the site, while maintaining open space, reducing curb cuts, et cetera. So we did reduce substantially from the original proposal. But within the R2 zone, we are very much in keeping with our conventional development plan, which Laura had that up earlier, which shows the 17 single-family lots, and that 17 single-family lots would be sprawling through the site, basically eating up all of the area and basically taking all of the open space away. So there would be no open space, the 1.4 acres would be eaten up into traditional yards. So we're comparing it to where we started, comparing it to the conventional plan, we ended up at 20. We thought we were set at 20 units, and then there was some, some discussion with both boards to further reduce, we looked at further reducing, which we did. At that point, when we start, or backing up, when we started the proposal, we were at about 100 variances. Then we were down to, I believe, 73 variances, and then we eliminated a building of two units, and then came down to the, to this, to the current proposal that's in front of the board for the 70, excuse me, for the 54. So, and again, the majority of those are really related to being townhouses, that they're internal walls, common walls, as Victor described earlier. So the applicant and us, as the engineer, feel that the plan has been reduced to the maximum amount practical.
Mr. Engel, I understand you keep referring back to that you were building apartments and so on. Just want you to know, we have no ideas of what happened in the past on the zoning board. This is something, first time we're here, I mean, this past week, we got these variances in front of us, so I just want you to know, any information you give us, it will benefit for us to understand what we're dealing with and so on. So I want you to know. So whatever information you feel like you want to give the zoning board, we appreciate it. Just a quick question, and I know Victor mentioned that, maybe you can ask that or answer that, or Victor. There was a mention of one lot is combining it, and I think you're talking about combining it with 17 and 18, is that 21 lot you mentioned?
Yes, yes, that's, that's an open-spaced lot, that's right at the gateway coming in from Van Antwerp, immediately adjacent to unit 18.
Right.
So that's an open-spaced lot currently.
So what would that, what would that give us if you were willing to combine that? How many variances would that eliminate if you were to do that?
Two, two. It doesn't, it doesn't meet the required lot depth, which would be, well, just that, the lot depth, and it doesn't meet the area requirement. So there would be two, two variants, two variances that would be eliminated.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, I'll take a break and let somebody else ask some questions. Thank you.
Mr. Engels, this is John Hoke. And following up on what Mr. Latif was asking at the get-go, I think one of the points he was trying to get at, or that prior comments from the community had brought out, was, I've heard you discuss in detail the prior uses and how the prior uses would be... heard you discuss in detail the prior uses and how the prior uses would be more intense uses of the property. You've scaled that down quite considerably and working with the planning board. And you said that any further reductions wouldn't be practical. I don't know if those are your exact words, but that was the gist of what you said, I believe. So I guess the question I have for you is, could you explain why that wouldn't be practical? I assume you're referring to a, just a return on investment, wouldn't be able to support that kind of return on investment if you reduced any further units? Is that what you're, you're saying?
Yes, yeah. We spoke to our clients and they said that reducing it from the 20 to the 18 units was basically the breaking point for any type of reasonable developments, proposal.
Plus, it also meets the density requirements if you were to go with just a single-family residential development.
If you were to go with a single-family residential development, are you indicating that you would need no variances for a 17-unit, single-family residential development there? Is that correct?
That is correct. That, that 17, 17 lot, single-family plan was developed, predicated based on meeting all of the R2 bulk area and setback requirements.
Thank you.
I'd like, no offense to Mr. Angle, but I'd like to confirm that with our town planner, Laura, if you don't mind.
Oh, sorry, Laura.
Yeah, I apologize this wasn't in your packet. That was what I was trying to bring up on the screen, but it's very black and white. The proposed 17 single-family lots don't appear to require area variances, but they're not fully measured. But it does appear that you could fit 17 single-family lots on that. And I can bring it back up if you guys want to look at it. The only other note I wanted to mention was that if you combined the open space area with lot 18, you would reduce area variances, but like a town or a homeowners association would own that open space if it stays a lot. If you combine it with lot 18, unless you put a deed restriction on it or something, which isn't, whatever, you would lose that open space.
All right, thank you, Laura.
I'll pose this either to Mr. Campanera or to Mr. Ingles. Welcome back to Niskuna. It's been a while since we've seen each other.
Indeed.
The five single-family residences that are there now, are they empty?
I believe they are, yeah.
Okay. You keep talking about a comparison between 17 proposed single-family residences and these townhouses, but that's not the current condition of this lot, correct? This lot consists of five single-family homes and then a sizable amount of green space?
Correct.
Okay. So I think it'd be fair to say that if five families lived in these homes and the green space remained, that that's going to be far different from 17 single-family homes. You're talking about a developed lot, whether it's townhouses or single-family homes?
That's what my clients are proposing, yes. Either single-family homes and putting in as many as they can without variances, which we just confirmed can be up to 17, or, in the alternative, clustering the proposal such that we proposed to create as much open space and green space as possible, which many, many municipalities are pushing towards now to preserve open space.
Understood. With, with all due respect, you understand that regardless of what the CRC and regardless of what the Town Planning Board did, we're an independent body. And while those decisions and those opinions are instructive, they're not binding, nor are they sway this body whatsoever. You understand that, right?
I understand that the planning board is an independent board, as is this board. And I understand that each board works diligently and tirelessly to do what's best for the town, which is why we spent so much time, so much energy, so many modifications to this plan, to give what we believe, as does the members of the town board or Town Planning Board, is the best possible scenario of use for this very, very unique piece of property that sits, as I've already indicated, in between pretty highly commercial uses.
And certainly, I appreciate that, we appreciate it. We're fortunate enough to get the end product rather than the five meetings of development. So, so we appreciate those efforts. I, I have a question about this traffic study, and I don't know if this is better sent to Mr. Ingles or yourself. And help me out with this. When you do a traffic study, you, meaning the collective you, is it, the, the trip generation that's calculated off of 18 townhouses, is that, I assume since they don't sit there, that's theoretical, right? That's based on studies?
ITE studies, that's.
Okay. So, so that is a theoretical, a, a, a study that's done somewhere, somehow, not necessarily in Niskuna?
Well, I, I'm not going to speak for Wendy Holzberger, who's the engineer that did this and, and wrote this. She did appear at several of the planning board meetings and spoke quite eloquently, I would think, and explained to the board how she came up with this. I cannot nor, you know, and be happy to bring her in here to, to answer your questions. But I think your question is, did she or somebody from her staff go out and sit there and do it? I don't know. Maybe, maybe not. I do know that in the projects that I work on throughout this area, we use traffic engineers routinely, and sometimes they go to the project and do, you know, onsite. Many, many times, they use the ITE standards, which the courts have recognized are reliable.
So, and I don't know how familiar you are personally with this area that we're talking about.
As I said, I've been here every month for the last five months. I love traveling through the town in Niskuna, and we have other projects that we're doing in the town, so I'm very, very familiar with this project.
Have you ever been at the corner of Van Antwerp Road and Balltown Road when Van Antwerp Middle School lets out?
I can't say that I have.
Have you ever been at the corner of Van Antwerp Road and Balltown Road when GE and Environment One and Knolls, Knolls Atomic Power let out?
I may have. I'm in, on that road often.
You know where the high school is?
I do.
Have you ever been on this road, not street, in the morning when the high school comes or in the afternoon when it lets out?
I can't say that I can, have or have.
I, I have, the reason I ask it, and I wouldn't anticipate you had for any particular reason, but the, the point that I'm trying to make is, is I have some significant, and if you say, well, this is a planning board issue, this isn't a zoning board issue, I would respectfully disagree, because one of the concerns, as you well know, you've done this longer than I have, that I have to address is, is it change the character of the neighborhood? I view the character of the neighborhood not to just be its R2 zoning versus commercial zoning versus a mixture of the two. It, the, the, the character of the neighborhood also is, am I going to be able to get in and out of my driveway, my house? Am I going to be able to effectively take my kids to school or pick them up? The character of the neighborhood as a whole does involve traffic. And there is a significant concern that I have in this area with increasing the traffic because of the morning commute to the businesses that are located and can, you can only get to on Balltown Road, the morning commute for school, the afternoon commute for school, the middle school lets out just right down Van Antwerp Road, which feeds right into this with school buses, many, many school buses. And the concern where we're dealing with an increased volume of homes now, townhouses. But now, instead of five homes that we have, which are sitting empty, so there's nobody in them, we now are going to have 18 families of some sort or another, who are going to add to the volume here. And I think I heard that a little bit with some of the people who, 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 you know, wrote emails and that type of thing. So I'm, I'm very concerned in terms of how that is going to affect the character of the neighborhood. This is, and I, I got to tell you, the, the buildings look beautiful, you know? But the concern that I have is, and I understand why you cut down the number of ingress and egress points, but still, if you've ever traveled this area in peak times, you know that not only the traffic backup on Balltown, but also getting in and getting out of these locations is extremely difficult.
Of course. I mean, any development of any property is going to bring more traffic. I mean, that's just common sense, right?
Sure.
Which is why we're proposing this development versus residential, which we wouldn't be in front of this board for, just so you know. And you wouldn't have to consider this issue. But if your concern is about traffic, I think Wendy Holzberger has concluded that this proposal is about half the amount of traffic that a single-family home development, which should make you feel a little more comfortable with the idea that this proposal that has been worked on for so very long is going to produce less traffic than single-family homes that don't need a variance.
Mr. Campanera, I appreciate that. I'm saying this, in practice, may be true. In reality, it's as far from the truth or believable that you can even imagine.
I would allow or respectfully indicate to you that I think Ms. Holberg, Holberger may have a different opinion than you.
Well, then maybe Ms. Holberger and I should go sit in her car or mine at the CBS, and she can see the reality of what I'm talking about. I, I understand, that's why I ask. I, I don't, I don't.
Maybe, maybe I can jump in and explain a little bit.
Sure, please.
I have been on Balltown and Van Antwerp Road during peak times, when there's traffic from E1 and GE and in the school, so I'm familiar with it. It's, it's a high, what they call an ADT, average daily traffic count. I think it's like 2,000 vehicles. It's a lot of vehicles. So we, we understand that, we appreciate that. The point that this chart shows, table two, and what Vic was trying to, to indicate is that the proposed townhomes will generate about half of what the vehicle traffic would be from a conventional, single-family layout. So if you look at it, basically, the single-family homes generate about one car in the peak hour. The townhomes generate half a car in the peak hour. So you can see for, for instance, for example, if we look at the AM peak, for the 17 single-family homes, there's 14 entering and 11 exiting for a total of 15 vehicle trips in that peak hour. The proposed 20 townhomes show two and six respectively for entering and exiting for a total of eight. So essentially about half. So if you took the existing five homes and they were rented and they did have people living there, you would subtract five vehicle trips from the eight. So essentially, you're creating imperceptible traffic is, is what the conclusion of this study is. And the ITE is a respected national standard, and it's based on observations and empirical studies, so it's, it's, it's pretty true. That's what, that's what we would expect. It's, it's tried and true, and it's what, what the industry standard would, would be, it's what would be used in the industry for traffic studies.
And, and thank you, Mr. Ingles, I appreciate that. And I have, I'm not casting aspersions on ICE. I don't even, as you can tell from my questions, I have no idea what the study is, but what I'm looking at is the amount of increased traffic from what is at this property now with no townhomes, no single-family homes that are occupied, is certainly less than it would be if I had 20 or 18 townhomes. I think we can both agree to that. So while, what I'm saying is, is already, as you've said, a high-density vehicle area hugely, especially during mornings and afternoons, that to now add 20, 18 townhomes would certainly increase that. Because the only way you can get in and out of these townhomes is either on Van Antwerp or on Balltown. That's all. That's my point, and I'm concerned about that. So that, that was one of the issues as I looked at this. These, and I think, Mr. Campanera, you said this, these are going to be, these, the intention is to, to have people own a townhome, is that correct?
Absolutely.
I mean, we're not talking about rentals, things like that. They're own the townhome.
That is correct.
And while I think you said, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that we don't have an issue with rear setbacks, that was the issue, right? There was an issue that we didn't have, we didn't have, require variances for rear setbacks, I think you said. Is that right? Yeah, I'm looking at it now. There, there, the ones that have rear setbacks are all, all in compliance.
There's no variance request for that.
And we've had a situation with this. This doesn't mean that we wouldn't have possibly a flurry of variances for people who are seeking to add on to their townhome and intruding in those setbacks, right?
Repeat that question, I don't think I understood what you're saying.
We just, we just had a, a development off Consul Road that is similar in some ways, number of different lots, some condos, townhouses, that kind of thing, that, that didn't have to come in front of us for, for issues. But we've seen a flurry of them, because now that they're in place and they're wanting to add decks, they're wanting to add things on to their townhome, on to their property, that now they do require variances. So it's not, it wouldn't surprise you, I guess, that if this is in place and up and running and going, that that could be an issue facing this board in the future.
Just as much as the gentleman that appeared in front of me, who has a house that has an issue with a fence, you could apply that to virtually every home in the town. Would, would I be right with that?
Most, most, I'm sure.
Yeah, so.
All, my only point is.
I know where you're going with this.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Victor.
Yeah.
That it appears to be a selling point to this board that we don't need to have rear yard setbacks, that doesn't mean that that's not going to be an issue for us in the future.
Yeah, I suppose you're right.
Okay.
As it wouldn't be an issue with any other homeowner wanting to put a fence up or put an addition on their home that doesn't meet the setback.
Absolutely.
So we are looking at 54 area variances. Do any members of the board have questions pertaining to the area variances?
Or I assume if we have other questions relating to the project, we can ask them, correct?
I, I guess, as long as it's within our, like, it's something that we can deal with, you know?
Sure. Variances, any of the criteria that we're required to, to, to pass judgment on.
Correct.
Certainly, that's fair game, right?
Correct.
I, I thought so, okay.
I do have some questions. One of the first questions I have is, if the width and the area restrictions were complied with in a townhome kind of layout, how many townhomes could be fitted? I'm particularly concerned about the width and the area limitations. Was, had there been any analysis of a townhome-type development that still complied with those width and area restrictions? And if so, how many townhomes could be done within those restrictions?
That would be a question for Mr. Ingles to answer. I don't know if he's looked at that.
We, we have not, we have not specifically looked at that. We, we have not, we have not specifically looked at that. But basically, it would probably cause the, the design to go back to the single-family, and, and there would be an abandonment of the townhouses. It wouldn't really be appropriate because the townhouses are basically predicated on splitting the lot. So if you started with either the eighty or a hundred-foot lot, and you split it in half, you're basically at that forty to fifty foot, which is, which is where we're at. So we're, we're actually greater than that. So it really wouldn't be appropriate to do that for, because the buildings don't have a side yard. So the, the thirty-foot side yard on the common wall, you're basically eliminating that because the building is connected. So it really wouldn't be appropriate for a townhouse to meet the single-family lot requirements.
Otherwise, it wouldn't be even called a townhome.
Why couldn't you just increase the area? So you have a number of variances that you're seeking to come, to limit the size of the area of each lot. Why couldn't you just expand the area of each lot and then thereby comply with the terms of the zoning code? I mean, there's not a lot of reduction on there. There's, the, the standard is nine thousand square, nine thousand square feet. And most of these are in the seventy-three to seventy-seven thousand area.
They're dangerously close.
It's, it's close. But so what we need to determine is whether these variances are the least that we need, that are necessary in order to allow the development. And I want to determine whether or not you tried to minimize the number of variances by increasing the area. And perhaps, yes, restricting perhaps maybe one or two of the townhomes, but still avoiding some of the variances that might be required.
I, I don't want to speak for David, but I think when, he, he's been working on this project a heck of a lot longer than I have. I think over five years. And one of the aspects of this unique piece of property, not only where it sits and between the commercial uses around the property, but the idea of trying to put a townhome development in here was to try to preserve as much open space as possible. And, you know, I think that's why, when the client heard the comments by the neighbors back in 2017 about, you know, we want property ownership, we don't want rentals, we don't want apartments, you know, we're concerned about traffic, we're concerned about curb cuts on both Van Antwerp and Balltown. The client then worked with Dave, and again, Dave, I don't want to put words in your mouth, to come up with a concept that they felt, and now I feel, that fits this property, the use that they want to put this property to, preserve open space as much as possible. And so while I understand what you're saying in terms of, well, you know, you could probably, you know, make some changes. I think in doing so, Dave, you'd probably lose a lot of the open space. And again, I guess this is a question for you to, to comment on, Dave.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, as I alluded to earlier, we were balancing a lot of variables, right? We were trying to reduce the variances. We were trying to come up with a, a design that met the applicant's goals in terms of the, the townhouses. We were trying to maximize open space. Under the single-family requirements, there's a ten percent requirement for open space. However, most applicants just pay the parkland fee. So there would essentially be zero open space in that plan compared to the 1.4 acres or the twenty-five or twenty-six percent. So we're showing a quarter of this land as open space. Really, the only thing that you could potentially do is you could, you could try to limit or try to reduce the open space and try to make these lots deeper. The way the grades work, you really wouldn't be doing much justice to usable area on the lot. And we certainly can't do much with the lot width because they're, they're pretty much maxed out, as you can see, going, going up and down Balltown as well as the three lots on Van Antwerp. Those have been pretty much made as wide as we can without shoving the road over and, and doing very strange configurations. So I think we have, I think we can legitimately say we have looked at that, and we have reduced the variances to, to the, to the least amount practicable. If there's anything specific on the plan that you see, we would be glad to, to look at it. But again, the only thing I could see that you could maybe do slightly is make some of these lots deeper, but then you're going to be encroaching into, into the open space. And, and I don't think it's going to really make the plan better. I think it would be a detriment.
Okay, so could you explain which of these elevations are going to face Balltown Road and Van Antwerp Road? I see the, the images of the homes here, but it's hard on this layout to determine what's going to face the road and what is going to be facing each other.
Sure.
Get my drift.
The garages are all in the rear, so that would orient the building. So all, all garages would be, be internal to the, to the project. So everything along Ball, all the, all the buildings along Balltown, the four buildings along Balltown, and the three along Van Antwerp, those are all the same building type. And then nine and ten and seventeen and eighteen are the smaller building type.
Okay, could you, could you point us to the elevation that we have here as to which will be facing Balltown and which will face Van Antwerp?
Sure.
Hey, can you, let, let Dave do that. He'll understand. Dave, can you? Can you see the, what's up on the board?
So this is definitely a, this is definitely a front-facing facade. And this would be what would be facing Balltown or, or.
Van Antwerp. What does that view show, Dave?
I believe that's a side view.
Okay.
And that would be a rear view of the garages.
And those would face the internal access roads?
Yes.
Within the property?
Yes.
That elevation there would be facing internal to the subdivision, correct?
Okay. And in terms of construction and trees on the site, is there going to, will there be any trees between these buildings and Balltown Road? Or will all the trees effectively be taken out and then replanted following construction?
We haven't finalized the grading plan, but there will be a fair amount of disturbance. We did speak to the Conservation Advisory Council. We told, we, we did commit to limiting the area of disturbance as much as possible, saving as many trees and tree buffers as possible, and then planting, planting some new street trees as well.
Would it, would it be possible to build these with some of the remaining vegetation that's there between Balltown Road, Van Antwerp Road, and where the construction is going to take place? Or are those trees effectively that are there now, aside from the open space?
I think that's not part of, that's not considered part of the open space. That would be on the, on the individual lots. So anything that's in that front setback, short of sidewalk connections, should be able to be preserved where appropriate.
Okay, but it's fair to say the majority of the trees in that, in that space are coming down? Where, in the area of disturbance, where the construction's going to be?
Maybe if we go back to the plan, that might help us see it a little bit better. They give Laura a workout.
She's already had a workout tonight.
So again, we haven't finished or finalized our grading plan yet. But there could be some trees that are preserved in front of the units along Balltown, as well as in front of the units on Van Antwerp. Definitely around units nine and ten, there's a fair amount of open space there that's on those lots that would be definitely preserved in terms of some of the existing tree vegetation. Likewise, around seventeen and eighteen, for sure, as well as the open space parcel. So where it might get tough is where we do grading in between the buildings. We'll be doing swale lines and things to get stormwater to flow. So I think in between the buildings would be difficult, but definitely along the buffers or along the outskirts of the development, the frontages, if there's any trees that are appropriate for preservation, those could be noted. And again, the CAC did ask us to incorporate any green practices, as much green practices as possible, as well as incorporating new street trees, which the applicant has committed to do.
Okay. Going back to my original question about alternative designs, you keep coming back to the fact that you could do seventeen homes here. Was there any analysis done to doing something like, you know, something less than seventeen, but charging more for the lots or charging more for the, the buildings that's constructed in order to reduce the number of homes that were built and yet still achieve your financial desires?
It wasn't the goal of the applicant to pursue the single-family plan. So we didn't go any further with it than the basic concept and layout that we did for the seventeen lots. So that'd be something that, that would really be directed toward the applicant if they had any desire to look at that. But based on our recent discussions, the plan that's before the ZBA was the, was the preferred plan, or is the preferred plan, I should say.
Okay. On the areas that are identified as open space, will there be deed restrictions, covenants on those to keep those as open space?
They can be, yes.
The answer's.
Planning board already discussed that.
This goes to the question about the reduction in variances. I wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, yeah. When, when we were in discussions and planning board, this became a big point that they wanted to make sure that, you know, this was the best possible use of the property for purposes of maintaining the allowable use in this R2 zone, namely, single-family dwellings. And so they wanted to ensure that, you know. And the, the iterations that we went through, you'd fall asleep if I continued to over them and over them. And, you know, we, we took out these bank parking spots, put them back in. You know, removed one of the buildings here to create a bigger space. So they're very, very in tune, they, meaning the planning board, with this use. And we even talked a little bit about this Lot 21, combining it with this to eliminate two variances with the idea that was mentioned by Laura about two hours ago that the, it could be, it could be a deed restriction on this, that you couldn't use it for any other use, namely, any addition or what have you.
And, and you keep, the reason I did raise it was less for the open space.
Yes.
More for that parcel.
Yes.
I am concerned that if we do combine it, then we lose the ability to put restrictions like that on it.
You do, but the zoning or the planning board doesn't. You know, that, we mentioned that, we already discussed it.
Okay.
And we agreed that we would do that, and that we would stipulate that that could not be used for any other, you know, building use or what have you.
Okay. It seemed like you were suggesting that we could reduce that by agreeing to do that here tonight. I wanted to make clear my position, which is I think that's a bad idea.
Okay.
So I wanted to make sure I had the facts right before I'd said that.
A bad idea.
The thing I want to point out is you keep coming back to the point that we're taking a lot of time with this property, and there have been a lot of iterations of this.
Not you, but us.
Yes, I know, but you came to, you can, you're suggesting that that's a bad thing.
Not at all.
I, that's the impression I've got.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
This is a critical piece of property, I think.
One hundred percent.
It is the barrier between the southern part of the town, where we do have a lot of green space, and the commercial area. And this is the last bastion of green space in this part of, of the town. So I think it's commendable for the town that we're spending as much time as we are, and that this board is spending as much time as we are on this.
I agree. And if you had the impression in any way, shape, or form that I thought this was painstaking, it is not. It's, it's, this has been a very, I've done a lot of these over the years, and I can tell you that not many of them have gone on over five years. So that in and of.
I've been involved in a few, too.
That in and of itself tells you that this town and the various boards are taking this very seriously and looking at this project very seriously, as are we, obviously.
In which I appreciate.
Yeah, indeed.
Just a procedural question. After our vote here today, if the variances are granted, this goes back to the planning board again.
Could you give the mic to Laura, please?
That is correct. I'll let Laura go into a little bit detail what that looks like after this. So the area variances are for a major subdivision application. It would go back to the planning board. If the area variances were granted, it would go back to the planning board for preliminary subdivision, which they would take place, all of the engineering.
Yep.
And all that stuff. Then the roads and infrastructure would be in place, and then it goes back to the planning board again for final subdivision. Then they can start building.
And what about site plan approval? Has that been done already?
So it doesn't need site plan approval, which you guys see a lot, because it's not a commercial thing. It as, what's being denied is a major subdivision application.
Okay.
So it's, it's not like a use or a commercial site. It's, it's in, it's all area variances related to twenty-one lots.
Okay.
Mr. Green, we haven't had a chance to hear from you on this. Do you have any questions?
Madam Chairman, thank you. I'm wondering if the gentlemen who are representing the applicants can share whatever thoughts they may have. The topic is traffic. I'm not so much interested in the counterfactual thought of seventeen allowable single-family homes. I'm wondering if, if you could comment for me a comparison of the amount of traffic that existed at the time that the structures were present and occupied by renters on Balltown Road with the belief as to the amount of traffic that will be generated should this board grant the application as to, as to the townhouses that are on Balltown Road.
David?
Sure, I'll take that. Basically, the, the existing single-family homes would generate about one vehicle in the peak hour. So if it was in the morning, there would be essentially five cars being generated during that peak time on, on Balltown or Van Antwerp. There's actually four curb cuts on Balltown and one on Van Antwerp. So they would be generating five vehicles in the peak hour, the AM peak. That would be in comparison to the townhouse scenario, which would generate about seven or eight. So really imperceptible traffic changes if we go back to the baseline condition of the five homes. So we'd basically be reverting to the five home of new vehicles. And I misspoke, and I would like to correct myself. There's a lot more than two thousand vehicles per day traveling on Balltown Road. Closer to twenty thousand vehicles per day, average daily traffic that travels on Balltown. So we would really be comparing two or three additional vehicles to that twenty thousand over the, over the period of one day.
So would you grant me by your own admission that this application were granted, there would be at least some incremental increase in the volume of traffic, and in particular, perhaps during peak hours?
Very, very minor, imperceptible. If you were, if we, we speak of that Balltown backup in the, in the light at Van Antwerp, you would not be able to realize the difference. If you were out there counting cars, you would not know the difference.
How about if you were out there sitting in traffic counting time?
It would be microseconds. You would be at the light for microseconds comparison.
I thank you for your thoughts on that discrete point.
You're welcome, thanks.
Madam Chairwoman, thank you for the opportunity. Other board members have been very thorough up to this moment. So I'm not going to repeat. There's topics that have been covered so well by others. But thank you for the opportunity to address what is a very big concern for me and everyone else who lives in this region who travels on Balltown Road, not even during non-peak traffic. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Daley, do you have any questions?
Yes, I, I might have missed it, maybe I didn't. Was there a traffic? analysis done on Balltown in Van Antwerp between four o'clock and five thirty or from four thirty until quarter to six? Was there, was there a study done? Or are we just taking a general study and lumping it into here? Did they, did they do it?
Yes, the VHB, there's a VHB, that's the, that's the engineering firm. They're a specialty traffic consultant. They did do a traffic assessment and they did study the existing traffic counts and then put in the comparison counts for for any proposed development.
Laura, you got a copy of that? Okay. Because I sit on Balltown, I travel out every day. And I travel Van Antwerp. And I try to stay away from the heavy traffic because sometimes I'm there for ten minutes.
I'm sure.
Well. When I heard the word microseconds, it threw me.
No, what I was referring to would be the impact of this development. That's what we're trying to evaluate, you know, what would, what would be the potential impact of this development? The impact of this development as proposed would be very, very minor.
I was listening to that myself. It sounds like a motorcycle is going around.
Are there any more questions from the board?
You know what that noise is, Laura?
Yeah.
Gone now.
I was trying to use my expertise.
For some reason, Mr. Green, we're getting feedback from your microphone when it's not muted.
Mr. Green, mute your microphone. There you go. Thank you, Mr. Green. We were having airplane flying over our heads. Mr. Caponero, back to me. I want to talk about stuff you mentioned earlier and also want to put it on the record to confirm that's what we're talking about. If we're looking at, Mr. Angle, you can also help with that. Looking at lot two, lot three and lot sixteen. Those three lots looks like that's the one you need some front setback. Is that right?
Yes.
What have you tried to do to eliminate or reduce that number for us? Because what you guys asking for fifty-four variance and correct, correct me if I'm wrong, you want them all approved at once and you don't want us to break them down. Is that true? You you want us to?
Actually, it took to us the process of how we're going to do the variances.
I know, but that's what they requested earlier when they said it. I know that's our process. Yeah, I know that's what we will decide, but for them, I think that's what they were requesting. I want to make sure. So can you explain to me what you have done to reduce? Or if you can eliminate or reduce it a little bit for lot two, three, and it looks like lot sixteen, you're only twenty-two point five instead of, you know, so you're you're seven point five, I think.
I knew that question was going to come up tonight and David and I had a conversation today. So let's talk first about this lot sixteen.
Okay.
Can you see where the road curves like this?
Yeah.
This is the only area, and this is considered a front yard. This is front yard, this is front yard because it faces the road. This is the only spot where it doesn't meet the thirty-foot setback. Everything else exceeds it. So this was a question was brought up in a meeting or two by the planning commission. When it was closer and what we did is we, we, there were four buildings here proposed. We took one out, we put it up here, created this a bigger curve to avoid any, you know, additional variances. So in answer to your question, there was, do you remember when we, when we first started talking about there was a hundred variances that we were going to need?
I I remember.
Okay. So we've gone from there down to where we are now to the fifty-four. Basically, in response to your question, what can you do to reduce it even further? So this was created, so there is a, there's a slight, you know, we we don't meet it there. So your question is, well, what can you do to change that? You really, I don't know what you can do to change this because if you slide this this way, you're you're not going to get anything and you can't go this way. So you can't do anything there. And then these other variances, because the road comes in here, these become front yard setbacks. Okay? And this red line that I'm pointing to up here is the property line. So if you slide this building there, guess what happens? You create a side yard setback variance. So in order to eliminate that, you have this, which basically is in keeping with these front yards. So so you have front yard, front yard, front yard, front yard, front yard, front yard. So that's why we, Dave, this morning, during our conversation, and Dave, if you want to add to what I've just said, please do.
Dave, before you add, I just want to, he, he talked about sixteen and he he did say if he moves it down, but that that will eliminate, you have three townhouses in there. And if you move it down, that will eliminate them two. So each townhouse has two units in it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So that will be down to four from six.
You're talking about eliminating another building.
I'm not talking about that. I'm just saying when you said you want to move it down, that's a possibility. I'm not saying that you're going to, you're going to take it out, but I'm just.
We had four there.
Right.
We took.
Oh, you had four?
Yes.
Okay.
We had four.
We, we've, we've scaled back. There was four buildings here of this type. And then we, we went to the smaller building, put it in the back. I want to note on this variance, it's hard to tell. It's only like a five-foot segment right, right, right at the very corner of building sixteen. It's the very northwest corner for about five feet. And if we start pushing that building somewhere else toward the toward Balltown, then we're going to invoke other variances. And the same thing on on Balltown Road. If we push the buildings further apart between two and three, where they're going to violate the setback with WRGB, the sideline or the sideline adjacent to CVS. So we've really studied this plan. And we've had probably eight iterations of this. So I think we're, we're really reduce the variances as much as possible, give or take the couple that we've discussed.
Okay. Well, just want to say I do appreciate your explanation, but again, I want you, the whole team, your team, to know any information you've given us here today, it's good for our record. And also, as we mentioned, we didn't know anything about this up until we we got this in the email. So any information you give us is very handy for our decision when we go make that decision later on. So going back to that lot sixteen, and I don't mean to keep us here all night, as Miss McGinnis probably will say, well, we'll spend the night here overnight. So lot sixteen, it's got, it's going to be having two front. Yeah, it's going to have two fronts on whatever that road that will be taking you into the townhouses and then Van Antwerp, correct?
Actually, it will have three fronts. It will have, it'll have a front on Van Antwerp and a front on the entry road and a front where the garages are.
Okay, so there you go.
Even though you would traditionally think of it as a rear, we counted that as a front.
Right, which is, that will lead to my question. Later on, when somebody purchases this property and they need a variance, then they have three front. And I know then it's not in your hand, but they, those people will be coming in front of this board if if they need some variance. And this is where, going back to Mr. Frery, where he was talking about, somebody wants to build a deck or they want to build something. So just clarification, when you guys build those, you're going to sell them, right?
Yes.
You're not the owner anymore of that property. And if the person, like you said, anybody who has a home or whatever, they want a variance, they're going to come and they're going to get a variance. So for this lot, it's going to have three front, like Mr. Angle said. So if somebody wants to apply for variance for a fence or a deck for anything, it's going to be very difficult for them to to come in front of this board and ask for this variance because of that situation. Usually, if we have two front, there's a problem, you know. So what did you guys do to, to, you said you reduced it, you had four buildings and four townhouses and you got, what was the reason? If you can explain to us, what was the reason again? I know you mentioned it a little bit. What did that give you when you reduced it to three?
It it substantially reduced the, I believe we had side yard, we had several side yard variances and much more sizable with lot width and area variances. Most of those, many of those are now compliant or essentially compliant with the area requirements and they're all compliant with the side yard. So there was a pretty hefty reduction in variances by reducing from four to three on Van Antwerp.
Laura, could you refresh my memory? I know this case was in our packet last month and it was a hefty number then, but it certainly has gone down. Can you, can you tell me what was the number last month that we were looking at?
Seventy-three, I believe.
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are you also? Did I hear you correctly? I think, and this seems a long time ago, for me at least. I think you indicated you, the Balltown access road off Balltown got relocated at some point. Is that right?
Yes.
Was it further towards CVS or?
It was closer to WRGB.
Almeria.
Almeria.
Was, what was the consideration in terms, the, the only reason I ask is it sort of piggybacks on, on, on Mr. Letice's question. If you located it at the end of the whole property and slid townhouses one and two down, you eliminate the need then, then you don't have front yards in in three. So I I'm just curious, what was the reasoning for relocation of the access road further towards CVS?
Again, balancing act, the, the, the concern there is that it would be too close to that intersection, so you would potentially have conflicting movements.
With Almeria, you said?
Yeah, and WRGB. So you'd have people trying to enter and exit. And they really would not, they were not aligned at that point. So basically, what we try to do from a design standpoint, from a traffic geometry standpoint, roadway geometry, would be to either align the intersections or get them as far away from each other as we can.
I'm sorry to make you do this. On my copy, I can't, I can't see it. Where is the WRGB? Is that?
It's directly, their driveway would be directly across from Almeria.
That makes sense then.
So the, the thought there was to move away from there so there would not be conflicts.
I just couldn't see the RGB on my, on the copy that I had. I couldn't see where it was. So that, now that makes sense.
The, the planning commission or board wanted that. They, they suggested that we move it further away. And they, they asked us also to provide an emergency access down into the CVS. As you can see, we've done that. Apparently, long before my time, there was litigation involving us when this was owned by another gentleman. And he brought a lawsuit and won a lawsuit that gave him access to their parking lot, which the planning board was very happy with because it provides another form of emergency egress-ingress. And they even asked us to look to possibly bring the road up to the WRGB. We checked that with them, but they said no.
And my concern was obviously if, if it were further north, you wouldn't need a setback for one of the, one of the other two townhouses. So, all right, I appreciate that.
I think that's what created the situation and to accommodate the concerns of the planning board, this is what we're, we're creating variances here, a couple of variances.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions from the board? Are there members of the community wishing to be heard? You can please come up, state your name and address.
My name is Douglas Hexel. That's H E X E L. I live at two four two nine Heartland Street, which if you look on your diagram is at the end of the cul-de-sac. I, I just want to bring up that one of the empty houses, I wave to that person almost every day when I leave for work, when they're letting their dog out. So I don't know if that's something for the Millers to look into, if they have a squatter there, but I, I believe at least one of the houses is not actually empty. Also, along the lines of who they spoke to, I don't know if they only spoke to the owners of those houses that they purchased, but I've been in that house since twenty seventeen and nobody has ever come and spoke to me about this project. The only correspondence or or input I've ever had is through the letters from this board. And, and on that note, I very much appreciate you, you know, hearing from me today. Mr. Frery said traffic is a huge concern in that spot. The intersection of Balltown and Van Antwerp is probably one of, if not the worst intersections in the town. Making that left onto Balltown Road, which I learned very, very quickly when I moved to that spot, is impossible, particularly during rush hour, but most parts of the day, you're left sitting there until the light turns red and then you're turning through a red light in order to make that left-hand turn from traveling southbound on on Balltown Road onto Van Antwerp. To the point that I worked down on Knott Street in the city, that I actually come up past this building. I take Knott Street East to Van Antwerp and come across that way to get home, back to my, my house, very close to this intersection because I avoid that intersection as much as possible. My wife and my two-and-a-half-year-old daughter also reside with me and we often take my two-and-a-half-year-old daughter to CVS. We walk her there. She loves going there and getting her lollipops. We've had multiple close calls in that parking lot, as Mr. Frery pointed out. Any reasonable person can go and stand in that parking lot for twenty minutes and see at least twenty cars speed through that intersection, going from Balltown Road onto Van Antwerp. To the point that often traffic is backed up just to make that turn into CVS to avoid that intersection. And this traffic pattern here, if you think that's going to discourage people from, from doing that, it's not. Especially as that traffic backs up trying to cut through CVS. I think it's great to bring townhouses into that area. I do like the idea. I think that the amount is, is what the problem is here and I, I think that's the impression that I got from the other board members when, when they were speaking. Mr. Chamarkey?
Nicely done.
Sorry. My, my wife and I, we both have very good jobs. We were very fortunate that when we were young, we were able to buy a nice house at the end of a cul-de-sac in Niskiuna, a town that we sought out because of the schools and because of the environment. I understand that not everybody has that luxury and a lot of people would like to send their kids to Niskiuna schools and live in this town. And a townhome is the perfect environment for that. I also realize that a lot of young couples with young kids are going to be moving into these homes. these homes. Now, we're seeing on, on this table alone, the lack of yard that they're going to have. So these kids are now going to be put in a situation where they're playing in a very small yard, in a very high-traffic area, where you're going to have a lot of vehicles cutting through this neighborhood, a lot of vehicles. So, yes, there, there's going to be some open space, and, and we keep talking about that acre of open space, which looks like it's going to be mostly a pond. The kids aren't gonna be able to play there, they're gonna be relegated to being inside the house, or in this very small yard with a lot of traffic going through. Along those lines, I, I was doing some research while I was sitting there, actually. That IT that they keep referencing, Institute of Transportation Engineers, they actually combined townhomes and apartments a couple of additions ago in their estimate plans, so they don't have an actual estimate for townhouses, they group that in with apartments as well. So just something to, to keep in mind, I'm, again, I'm not a transportation engineer, I don't think any of you are, but understand that they don't actually have a number for townhouses. They use a, a single number for both apartments and for townhouses. Something else of note, we just lost a significant amount of green space at the corner of Hilltop in Van Antwerp, just, what was that, probably about two or three years ago, I'm sure many of you were on the board and, and were involved in that. A, a huge amount of green space was lost there, there's now four houses. I'm good friends with the original owner of one of the houses, who moved out in less than a year, because they had absolutely no privacy. They built the fence, and then their neighbor built the deck that looked directly into their backyard, because the houses were so close to each other. And again, when they went out and they bought the land, they saw that it was a pretty, fairly wooded area, all of the trees were knocked down, they planted maybe five or six ornamental trees in the whole lot. So, that was a significant loss of green space that we had. Something else on this diagram that I'd just like to bring to your attention, it actually looks like it's possibly shifted to the left a little bit, if you're looking with the staple on your right-hand side. You'll see, my, my house is at the end of the cul-de-sac there, on the, the one on the left-hand side. That house on the right, fortunately, I'm very close with that neighbor, if I stand perpendicular to that house, to that front door, like I am with, with Madam Chairperson right now, that is where my yard begins, okay? My yard actually starts directly across from his front door, because of the required frontage of the lot when it was, when it was subdivided in, in 1997, the houses were built. We've actually both had surveyors out, they came out. We may possibly be bringing the case to you guys shortly to, you know, subdivide that further, but I just would like to point out that that was a variance that honestly is, when you look at where the actual property line is between my neighbor and I, is kind of absurd. About half of his front yard belongs to me. Again, that was because of the, the required land area there. And, let's see, back to, to traffic, just because I, I left this off, my notes are really disjointed here. Just ask anybody on Story Ave what happens, especially between, obviously between Balltown and Van Antwerp. The, the amount of traffic and the amount of people who avoid that intersection, I mean, I've had cars pull out in front of me there, I've had cars just blatantly, two or three cars in a row not stopped, to the point where I've had to come to a complete stop on Balltown Road for vehicles making that turn. I've had a number of close calls just turning off of my street onto Van Antwerp, because it's kind of a, a blind turn, where I have to pull out to, I'm, I'm essentially about a foot into the road in order to make the left-hand turn, and vehicles coming off Balltown at, you know, 45, 50 miles an hour, in a 30 mile an hour zone there. The police, and, and it wasn't from my call, it was from a different neighbor, have actually set up radar at Van Antwerp and Balltown before, on the, the Van Antwerp side, because of all the vehicles that come off at a very high rate of speed, coming through that intersection It's, it's obvious, they were talking about, they kept talking about that 17-home plan. I'd asked Laura if she knew what the square footage was of those 17 houses, because, yeah, if you build a, you know, thousand-foot, you know, two-bedroom bungalow, obviously, you can fit a lot of those into an area, versus if this is a, you know, 2,500 square foot, you know, two-and-a-half-storehouse. Townhouses, they, they cost about half what a, a, a single-family house costs to, to build, because you're basically building one house, and then just dividing it into, even when you factor in all the, you know, the appliances and finishing and everything, it's still, you can build two townhouses in, in one building for about the cost of a, of a single-family house. So, I understand why they're pursuing townhomes from a, a financial standpoint. On, on that note, the, you know, saying that, basically that they're going to, you know, abandon this plan if, if you try to become more restrictive and tell them to reduce, you know, from, from 18 units down to, down to 14, like most of the letters and like myself are, are suggesting, that basically they're going to abandon the plan. I mean, i-if, if that's what happens, that's what happens, but, you know, it shouldn't be a, a point to, to almost strong-arm the board, saying, "Look, if this isn't approved, then we're just not building there." Because the town could benefit from the townhouses, the town could benefit from, from, you know, having an option like this, but not to the point of, you know, either you approve this or we're not doing anything. Lastly, Mr. Caponero? Mr. Caponero pointed out that other towns have a cluster code for these townhouses. I asked the board to look at that. Look at surrounding towns, let's, you know, look at Colony, let's look at, you know, even just around the state, and find their codes. And, you know, I'm not saying that you guys have to go through the, the trouble of adopting this code, but compare it, compare it to this plan, and, and see in what towns this plan would actually decode for a townhouse. So, lastly, I, I don't think this is least restrictive, I think it's clear to all of us that the least restrictive thing is to remove two of the buildings, four of the units. They probably had very minimal variances, and for that reason, I ask you to, to reject the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard?
Good evening, I'm John Fish, I live at 1349 Hawthorne Road. I came here to talk about a fence, which is the next topic. I stumbled across something I'm more passionate, more interested in, which is this topic. I think it's unfortunate that you sent out letters just to the local community, neighbors. I live about two miles away, I'm very, very interested in this project. There's two reasons that I would not grant any variance whatsoever. The first, very much what Mr. Frery talked about, all my thoughts, he really summed up much better than I could. It's character, and it's traffic. So I grew up in Southern California, I don't know if you guys have ever been there, they have freeways, but you actually pay a cost, you pay time to travel on those freeways. There are five lanes across on each side, and you will sit in five lanes of traffic back-to-back for an hour to go to the grocery store sometimes. It's terrible. I came out here to go to grad school at RPI, and I fell in love with the Northeast. The Adirondacks are incredible, the trees that we have out here, you have to go to Northern California before you can get to the redwoods, and beautiful plant just like that, but the Adirondacks are right in my backyard. I then came to Niskiuna, and it's everything I wanted. They have oak trees, maple trees, pine trees that are 30, 50 years old, and they're huge. If you cut them down and you put in an ornamental one, it's not the same. So traffic, I loved the traffic on 87 when I went to RPI, and it's gotten worse, and worse, and worse. So I don't go on Balltown Road because of the traffic. I'll take my dog, I'll go over to Old Niskiuna, and I'll bike ride, and he'll run next to me, across all those areas that have the character, those old houses, the trees that we're all gonna chop down, and this last bastion that separates commercial from residential. I'm not in favor of doing that. That's the character part and the traffic part. So, for those reasons, I'm staying here, in two weeks, I'm gonna pay my taxes, I could pay less taxes in Southern California than my mom pays. Here, I do it because of the neighborhood here, and I'm not in favor of changing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard on this matter?
Laura, did we have anybody else?
There was a lady that had asked for the login, but she dropped off, and she's not here anymore.
We don't have anybody else online.
So there's no one else online.
Okay. I, I have another, I have a follow-up question for the property owners, after hearing some of our speakers, and one of them sharing that, you know, he lives right across from the project, and he has not been approached. Who are the neighbors that you've been speaking with?
I haven't spoken to any of the neighbors, it was my clients that did, before they engaged our firm to represent them over the last six or seven months. Would either be Robert and/or Tim Miller. I hope they're still online, so.
Yeah, this is, this is Bob Junior, still online, I believe Tim is as well. We reached out to Daisy Shonfield, originally, and Daisy, we sort of leaned on her to say, you know, who should we speak with? When we, when we were before the planning board back in 2017, we took all the comments that the public made at two public hearings very swiftly, we took diligent notes and distilled down what people had said into various categories, like traffic, burden on school, curb cuts, ownership versus rental. And we looked at, at some of people's comments, and then reached out to Daisy, we spoke to Daryl Bray. There were three other people with whom we spoke, but we kind of leaned on Daisy and Mike as the, as to the people, the group that we should be speaking to, she was our point of contact. But for sure, and I don't have the notes in front of me, and I apologize for that, but for sure, Daisy and Mike Shonfield and Daryl Bray were in that group. I believe there was also a gentleman who lived directly across Balltown Road, and I, I apologize to the gentleman who was speaking before, who lives across the street, that he was not somebody that we reached out to, but I believe that he's pretty close, neighbor-wise, to, to Daisy, I think she lives right over there as well. But, but that's a summary as, as to who we spoke to. It was over a couple meetings.
Yeah, I, I had the perception, I know that from following this story in the newspaper, and knowing that there had been petitions and groups and things like that, from what was said tonight, I had the perception that you were meeting with large groups of neighbors, I didn't realize it was only five. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Okay. Okay.
Just a quick question about those five houses right now that existed? Do you guys own these five houses?
Yes. When you say "you guys," I'm my client.
Right, your client owns them, and they are part of the 5.3 acres?
Yes.
Okay, just confirming, so they already been purchased?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We didn't know about the person that apparently lives in one of them, though.
Well, that's why, that's why I was wondering.
Thank you for.
No, I, this is Bob again, I don't believe that there's anybody that lives in any of the houses. There are, there are two houses across the street from the gentleman that was speaking, one of those houses we do not own, it's the one house closest to CVS. And that may be where the gentleman that he sees waving to him is, is living.
Can, can you please repeat this, what you just said?
There are five homes that we own on that lot, four of them are on Balltown Road, and one is on Van Antwerp. There, there are two houses on Van Antwerp right next to CVS, only one of those we own.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna get guidance from counsel, can I have your opinion on how we would proceed with looking at these variances? Like if we were to chunk them, or what would you suggest?
I think it's gonna be whatever's gonna be easiest for you guys, but I, it's my understanding that they need essentially all of them to move forward with the plan as drafted, so if the board is comfortable voting on it as a whole, that would be my recommendation.
Mr. Frery, guidance from you, looks like your eyes are, are full, like maybe you wanna say something.
I'm full of it, but not. I'm mulling things in my mind.
First of all, I want to thank Victor and, and your clients, and I know you've worked very hard on this project, and while it's what you do, you've put a lot of time into it, as have your clients and the people that, that Mr. Engel, and the people that you've worked with, and I think that's a, I wouldn't expect anything else, but that having been said, I think you've, you've guys have, have done a great job, and clearly have synthesized this over and over again, work that we didn't see, but I appreciate you informing us of this. This is, for those of us that live in this town, this is a difficult issue. I'm struck by the comment that Mr. Tramarki made, and I think this goes really to the root of my position on this, and my position only, is when he said this is sort of the last bastion in this central town area of green space. And we can talk all we want to talk about, about we're gonna dedicate this, and we're gonna use that, and everything else, but what we've got here is the last bastion in the middle of this town of green space. We just went through what I would call a horrendous raping of property across the street from ShopRite, where it, a similar green space was absolutely destroyed, so we could put up luxury apartments. And with all due respect to the planning board, and I sat on the 2013 town plan and put together this document about what this town needs, in the way of housing, in green space, and everything else. And I couldn't disagree with them more, because what I see in this town is apartments, and townhouses, and luxury apartments, all within, I would say, a mile to a mile and a half of the town center. And now, down, down the road from me on River Road, I've got another humongous, humongous tree raping project where they're building. So, in my consideration of this project, I have to cover the criteria that I'm required to cover by law. Is this substantial? It is, and I think you admit that in your papers. Is that controlling? It's not. But it is a criteria that I need to consider. As I think Mr. Latif has indicated, never before, at least in the time that, that the three, what I hate to call elder statesmen of this board, Mr. Daley, Mr. Latif, and myself have sat on this board, have we ever had a request for 54 variances? Some of them make absolute sense to me, I mean, I, I don't consider it to be an issue, the, the, the variances is that deal with the properties that are co- I mean, I, I don't consider it to be an issue, the, the, the variances is that deal with the properties that are co-joined. But what I do consider to be substantial is the number of variances that are required for the number of properties being sought. And I absolutely understand your client's financial consideration of we need X number of properties to make this a viable venture. It is substantial. Will it change the character of the neighborhood? For me, that is an absolutely. It'll change it in another number of ways. I, I again say that, and I realize she's not here, but whoever put together the traffic study didn't sit at this intersection, didn't drive these roads. And they certainly didn't during the morning school rush and the afternoon school rush and, and the traffic that I see on a daily, multi-times a day driving through here. It will change the character of the neighborhood. Any addition to traffic will change the character of the neighborhood. Is there an environmental effect? Mr. Trimarky put it better than I could. We are now taking the last bastion of green space in the center of this town and it is now going to be gone. Yes, we're putting up very pretty townhouses. And I think they look very nice and I applaud you for it. But the environmental effect of taking that, and I understand that we're, we've got an acre of green space and a, a tenth of an acre and a third of an acre. But we have a lot of small lots in a very high density trafficked area. And I'm very, very sensitive to this cut through issue, which this will be a cut through property for people. I guarantee it. And while there is an acre of property that will be dedicated, there's also a stormwater management pond, a bio retention area, which I think while they're necessary, they also, from what I see, intrude on that green space. So there's an environmental effect. There's a change to the character of the neighborhood is substantial. And then we get to the, is it the least restrictive? Are there any other alternatives? And I, while I understand the financial aspect to your client, many of these variances can be either eliminated or the number reduced by reducing the number of townhouses. I know that's not desirable for your client, but I think that eliminates. And have you done that already? Absolutely. And I don't want to minimize that. But this board is required to take what you give us and operate off that. So when we're looking at the number of townhouses, could we reduce them, the number? Reduce the number of variances? Maybe eliminate a lot of variances? I think the answer to me is yes. Again, I don't want to minimize the amount of work that's gone into this. I know it's been five years for Mr. Engel. And I'm sure that my motion is not what he or you or your clients wanted to hear. But for those reasons, I vote that we deny the variances as requested.
The motion's been made. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I'm going to second the motion. And I'm going to add a few things to, to this. Like Mr. Frery mentioned, this is very rare when we get that many variants in front of us. I want to applaud the applicant. And Mr. Engel, you did a great job on the plans and all this. The unfortunate part that this part of town is a very difficult spot for the people who's driving in the morning. And I'm one of the parents who drives my son to the high school every morning. It's supposed to take me two minutes. It takes me forty, thirty-five minutes, forty minutes. And I'm only driving a couple of miles down the street. And then my son is late three minutes every day because I can't justify the time I should leave my house. So I'm very concerned about the people who wrote to the board, their concerns. And I'm also concerned about the trees that they're going to be cut, the green, and also the character of the neighborhood. Now, if there was a, a solution, I did not hear it from the applicant about maybe reducing the townhouses to fourteen and make it work. It came to the board that this is what they want and this is how they're going to want it. And for all these reasons that were said by Mr. Frery and what I'm saying, I'm going to second the motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Frery?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Trimarky?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
I am appreciative of the efforts that have been communicated to the board with regard to the applicant's attempts to minimize the density and minimize the number of requests for variances. But for, for the reasons stated, I am going to vote yes on the motion also.
Mr. Hoak?
Yes.
Chairperson McGinnis?
I appreciate all of the work that's gone into this project. And I believe in multi-use projects and providing an opportunity for people to age in place. This would give people an opportunity to downsize and stay in the town of Niskuna. It's a creative, interesting use of the space. However, it is a substantial request. It does change the character of the neighborhood, definitely by the traffic. In some cases, you could look at it and say, it may be for the better. I mean, you have, you know, five rentals right now, some of which are not cared for. And these would be new properties. The environmental impact would be great because, you know, it is the loss of old trees and green space. And we have not seen an attempt to work with us other than the possibility of getting rid of, I believe it was Lot 21. And that had some, you know, negative connotations as well. So for all of those reasons, I also vote no. The, the motion is approved and the variant. Yes, I, I voted yes. And the motion is approved. The variance is denied.
Thank you for your time and your consideration in this application. This, as I've said before, has been five years in the making. Thank you very much.
Would the clerk call the next case, please?
The appeal of William Capiello for a variance from section 220-25B1A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property at 1353 Hawthorne Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district to maintain a six-foot fence which exceeds the height limit in the front and side yards. Fence section 220-25B1A permits the maximum height for fences located in the front and side yards to be four feet. As constructed, a six-foot high fence is located in both side yards and the front yard. Therefore, a two-foot fence height variance is required. Ten notices were mailed out, five responses.
The first response is from Michelle, sorry, Michael Goldstof and Joan Thompson. They write, in reference to the variance request for William Capiello, we have no objection at all and wish them well in their project. Thank you. Michael Goldstof, Joan Thompson, 1358 Hawthorne Road. Second letter we received is from Michael Jakubowski. I am writing in support of the appeal for a variance by William Capiello and support his request to construct a six-foot high fence. Michael Jakubowski, 1350 Hawthorne Road. Third letter is from Lionel and Eric Engelmeyer. We are sending this letter of support regarding the fence height zoning variance for Will and Allison Capiello on Hawthorne Road. While the fence height has very little impact on us because we face the front of the house, we still have information that we feel would be impactful in deciding this variance request. We have lived directly across the street from the Capiellos for almost seven years and they've been extraordinary neighbors ever since. I mention this because not only are they helpful and friendly, but they've been very respectful and have the concern of their neighbors in mind. For a family with three active boys in elementary school and middle school, they have always been cognizant of their presence among their neighbors. And we believe it is just this concern for their neighbors that leads them to want to increase the height of their fence. The increased height will no doubt stop more errant balls flying into the neighbors' yards and perhaps will even muffle some additional noise of happy kids playing in the yard. Will and Allison are deliberate concerned neighbors and we are sure they made the decision regarding fence height with all of us in mind. If we can provide any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact us with their contact information. Sincerely, Lionel and Eric Engelmeyer, 1354 Hawthorne Road. This next letter, Appeal for Zoning in Regards to Section 220-25B1A. Purpose: This letter provides a Niskuna Town resident input for a planned Niskuna zoning board of appeals meeting scheduled for 2/19/2022. I am the current resident at 1349 Hawthorne Road and I have resided here since 2004. I provide the following input to support my objection for the request for a zoning exemption for a side fence located between my property and my neighbors located at 1353 Hawthorne Road. Note that the letter documenting an opportunity for public input is dated 1/7/2021 with an advertised meeting in the town hall of 1/19/2021. The transmittal letter for this meeting from the U.S. Postal Service is dated 1/7/2022. Based on the available online agenda, the next appeals meeting is scheduled for 2/19/2022 with this on the agenda for 7:00 P.M. The dating issue did not impact me, but should be corrected in the meeting minutes for accuracy. A, Loss of aesthetic value. I purchased my home in 2004 and one of my primary considerations was the views of the heavily wooded areas surrounding the house at 1349 Hawthorne Road. One of my favorite pastimes is to read a book or barbecue on my deck and enjoy spectacular views of nature. As shown in figures one and two, my view has been degraded by the recently installed fence. I recognize this is a personal view on my part. The building permit process is intended to provide stability, ensuring the neighborhood maintains its original character in both construction and elements of nature, while allowing homeowners to improve and modernize their property with minimal impact on nature or their neighbors' enjoyment of nature. From my perspective, the building code represents a trust established with each new homeowner of what they can expect in the future. Any exemptions to this trust should be rare and have substantial justification of benefits, alternatives considered and be fully supported by their immediate neighbors. I do not believe the proposed exemption meets these standards. B, Loss of property value. As I consider the sale of my home and relocation to California, I consider my house to be less attractive to a potential buyer than, that is looking for when I was, sorry. Less attractive to a potential buyer that is looking for I was back in 2004. Unimpeded views of the wooded areas located along the western side of Hawthorne Hill. The appeal letter dated September 30th, 2021 states that the fence is well removed from Hawthorne Road and not visible from the road. This is true, but the fence is readily, readily visible from the living portion of my house as shown in figures one and figures two. Installation prior to final approval. The request for the building permit for the perimeter fence was submitted in September 2021 after installation of the fence was complete. This gap in time puts the project at risk if the permit is denied. Furthermore, contractors should be required to post an approved building permit at the initiation of the project. This would allow for upfront input from neighbors and the town of Niskuna Building Department. D, Upon review of the appeal submitted September 30th, 2021, it states that both adjacent neighbors concurred with the height of the planned fence installation. I was not requested for my input and did not concur with a fence out of existing building codes. I spoke with Mr. Capiello on January 18th, 2022 and he indicated he had a discussion with our other neighbor located to the north of his property, but he did not review the planned fence with me. Summary, I object to the proposed 24-inch variance for the fence discussed above. This is based on the following points. Loss of aesthetic views from my home. Potential loss of interest from future buyers of my home and lack of opportunity for myself and Niskuna to provide input prior to initiating the fence construction. Potential alternative. I understand the inherent value that the fence provides to my neighbor and his family. He was generally surprised by the fence requirements, i.e. side and rear heights. If our other neighbor immediately to the north of 1353 Hawthorne desires a higher fence, an exemption could be granted for that portion of the property. Sincerely, J.S. Fish, 1349 Hawthorne Road. And I can share the pictures that he submitted in this letter. No, I can't. I don't have these electronically. I'll just pass them around to the board. The last letter, my name is Hong Kyu Shion. I have lived in, at 1357 Hawthorne Road, Niskuna for over 42 years. I submit this statement to express my objection to the appeal of William Capiello seeking a variance at 1353 Hawthorne Road, which property is immediately adjacent and to the left of my property as viewed from the roadway. My wife, Kai So Shion, joins in this opposition. The fence was installed less than one year ago, i.e. May of 2021. I was advised by Mr. Capiello that he had permission to install the fence. I was not made aware that the height of the fence exceeded the applicable provisions in the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna. Since the fence has been installed, the view from my property has been severely impacted. I used to be able to see deer traversing a pathway in the winter. I can no longer see them. The adjoining property is substantially elevated above my property, increasing the negative impact of the fence. It affects both my view and the transmission of light to my property, particularly during the parts of the year when tree vegetation is absent. The applicant's statement of appeal acknowledges the barrier presented by the oversized fence and steep terrain upon which it is placed. The fence greatly exacerbates the reduction in lighting and sight lines on my property. The applicant maintains that the fence was intentionally placed at its enhanced height to allow additional privacy. His statement of appeal maintains that this was done at the request of adjacent neighbors. I never made such a request. Since my property is, the immediately adjacent property downgrade from the applicant's property, it is most affected by the oversized fence. The variance requested will have an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The neighborhood does not present an image of lots then segregated by large fencing. The neighborhood places a premium on natural vegetation rather than lots being sharply demarcated by fences or large structures of any type. The applicant can achieve the benefit he seeks by limiting the height of the variance to four feet, rather than seeking a variance to allow the height to increase to six feet. The variance sought is substantial. The increase in height requested is one-half of the allowable height under the ordinance. Also, if the variance is granted, there is no logical reason why all the property owners in the neighborhood should be restricted to fencing that is four feet in height. Granting the variance will be a gateway for others to seek similar relief and thereby make the fence height restriction in the ordinance a dead letter. Finally, it is clear that the difficulty was self-created. The applicant acknowledges that he intentionally placed an oversized fence on the property without considering applicable order. without considering applicable ordinance. I am requesting that the Zoning Board of Appeals deny the applicant's appeal and reject his request for a variance from the requirements of Section Two Twenty-Dash Twenty-Five B One A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, dated January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two, signed by Hong Kyu Shion. He did also include pictures, which I do have. Oops, I. Yes, I did. Let's just pass those ones around, too. Okay. And that's all the comments we received.
Okay, you can state your name and address, and then tell us about your case, what you've done to mitigate the need for the variance.
Okay. My name is Will Capiello. Can you hear me okay? I live at thirteen fifty-three Hawthorne Road. I realize it's been a long night. I'm usually asleep by now. I get up pretty early. I'm sure all you do as well. I try to be brief and honest and try to present my case as best as possible. I've been proud owner of the house at thirteen fifty-three for a little over seven years. It's my life home, my wife, and my three little boys. They go to school in the Rosendale School in Iroquois. My wife's a schoolteacher in the district. We're entrenched in community. We chose the community. We chose to live in Niskuna for all the right reasons that others have said and echoed in this room today. We chose a lot of things. We don't get to choose our neighbors at times, and that's always a challenge. And I want to be respectful of both my adjacent neighbors. So we applied for a pool permit, pool building permit. I was well within approval with the permit. I got approval. My fence was within the drawing of the backyard, and the original permit was put in in May of twenty-twenty. Obviously, we've been going through a pandemic. It's taken much longer than we anticipated, over a year and a half to install the pool, the components, the fencing, everything. My neighbor at thirteen fifty, thirteen fifty-seven, has been frustrated with that project. And my backyard, I'm sorry, my driveway where my kids play every day, the balls happen to go into his yard. It happens. They're kids. It's young. They're young, and they go get the ball, and he has screamed at them on several occasions. He's frustrated that they're trespassing, and it's become a thing. So I explained to him that I'd be happy to extend the fence line beyond my rear corner of my house, onto my driveway, or adjacent to my driveway, and to create a barrier to dissolve the situation that seemed to suit him at the time. At the time the fence was being put in, I walked the line with him several times. Additionally, John Fish, who I met for the first time in eight years, was in this courtroom last night. I met him last night. He's, I wish he was here today, wish he continued on and stayed here. I consulted with his wife and communicated that the fence was going in on the side of the property to have a symmetric viewpoint from the road that it looked, it looked equal that. It was unbalanced, it was unbalanced with one side versus the other. I'll be honest with you, I was pretty much in tune and experienced, I thought I was, in applying for the pool permit. A year or year later, when I decided to extend this fence line past the property, I thought I was in my right to extend the six-foot fence. I might make a correction to my initial request for approval. I, it is self-created. I did not realize at the time, and I did not realize when I was filling this paperwork out, what that meant, and now I understand. That is self-created. I did extend the fence line. I apologize. I would have went to the zoning board earlier and asked for approval, but I believe for the safety and well-being of my family and privacy, from John Fish to the left of me, I don't see the obstructive views. He just, the only unobstructed view that the six-foot fence creates is allowing him to see my family swim in the pool, and that felt invasive, and I am requesting to continue to keep that fence line at the six-foot height and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm gonna start the questioning. So you applied for the pool. When you applied for the pool, did you also apply for a building permit for the fence?
Yes, sir.
And you received those?
Yes.
Okay. In our packet is, well, there's a lot of things, but included is a diagram of an aluminum fence, and it's stamped "Received September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one." That looks like that was a fence that was approved?
So the front of the house, or the fence facing the street
Uh-huh.
is a aluminum fence.
Okay.
The side and part of the back is a six-foot cedar fence that provides more privacy.
Okay.
And I have pictures here I can show, so if that helps you.
Well, I saw the cedar fence, like, in all the pictures going around, and that's where I was confused because I see this approved aluminum fence, and then I saw cedar. So that wasn't making sense. Okay. Questions from the board?
So I'm looking at this diagram.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you talked a couple of times about from the rear corner of your house. There's a six-foot fence all the way around your backyard, right?
It actually doesn't go all the way around. It turns into a chain link. My, my, my house is pitched up on a hill, and it's on the peak of the hill, so the fence, the fence, may I just go ahead and I can point to the diagram?
Take the microphone.
Just take the, if you take that microphone that Laura has right there with you, please.
Sure. So the aluminum fence that we were just discussing is right here, and then the six-foot cedar fence was initially, the plan was to start here and go all the way around to here, and where it changed, this goes down, the gray goes down, and it goes to a black chain link fence, and then comes back up, and it's cedar here. And that was planned, that was approved by the building when I applied for my building permit for the pool.
And that's up?
And that's up.
Okay.
At the time when that was being put up, I was having issues with my neighbor, whose backyard, because he's on a reverse radius, his backyard is basically adjacent to my driveway. So I walked this property line with my neighbor, and I said, "I can put a fence. I can extend the fence." I did, I did not, I was not familiar enough to realize I had to drop from six to four. And so what we're talking about here for this two-foot variance is for forty feet, there's five panels of six-foot fence right here that I'm asking for the two-foot variance allowance from here to here. On this side is where John Fish lives, who was in the room earlier, and that's, for symmetrical reasons from the road, it's a lot, actually, it's a lot more symmetrical. I continued the fence line on the side of the property. And so I'm also asking for the additional two feet on this side. John, we both have, this is a great part in Niskuna. We do have beautiful views of the western sunsets on the Adirondacks facing outward. I don't understand his concern on looking, when he sits on his deck and he looks this way and looks into my backyard, I don't understand what, there's no trees there, and I have pictures if you'd like to see those, if that helps at all.
So you understand that the only issue that we're here deciding are the two sections of fence from the rear corner of your house forward?
Yes, sir.
And you put on here that your house, is it the front of your house that's a hundred and twenty-five feet off the road?
Yes, sir.
So from the front portion?
From here to the road is, I'm up on a hill, it's a hundred and twenty-five feet from the road.
And what is the, if you know, if you can tell me, what is the section of fence from the?
From here to here is forty feet.
No, from there to the front of your house. How much of it's?
From here?
Yeah. How many panels would it be?
From here to there?
No, to the front corner of your house, yeah. I'm trying to find out how far off the road that offending section ends from the road.
Hundred, hun, hundred and thirty feet, a hundred and twenty-five feet, a hundred and thirty feet, because the corner of my house is right here, the front corner of my house, and the panels are more or less end where the front corner of my house is.
Okay.
It's pretty far off the road. I have more pictures to support that evidence. Yeah, I mean, it's a tough thing. I wish I would have known that there was a side, I should have known. I'm asking for forgiveness, and, you know, you know, I did put in here that I don't know what other options can be other than pulling the fence out and starting again.
It's wood panel, though, right?
Yes, sir.
Can't cut it off?
I could hire somebody to come in and cut it off.
Got a good chainsaw?
I, you got an extra hand?
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
But yeah, I mean, that's, that's pretty much it. I don't know if I'd be happy to answer any more questions for the board.
So from the comments we've received, it seems the neighbors on both sides are objecting to the extension of the fence. Do you have a sense for why the neighbor on your right, as we're looking at this, is objecting if you had walked that line with them?
Sure. My driveway is right here. So there's a, I put a basketball net right here, not a permanent one, but a one that, you know, that you can roll around. Anyway, so with three boys, the ball ends up on his yard. He's frustrated and has scolded my sons on multiple occasions that they're trespassing. So I, I said to him, I'm, we were in the process of putting in the pool, and I had approved the fence line. I said, "Look, I, I can extend the fence line." He didn't oppose that at the time. In fact, I don't think there's been a ball that has gone on his side of the fence since. So I solved one problem, created another. And like I said, you know, it's unfortunate, I don't have a relationship with my neighbors adjacent to me. I have, I know everybody else on the block. I don't have a relationship with these two adjacent neighbors. His wife is no longer living there. My wife and her, and his wife were friendly, and they did talk on the street, and she did walk her through this all, but she's no longer living there, it's just him. So.
To your knowledge, do they understand that you could put a four-foot fence there?
I tried to explain that to both John last night when he came to my house, and he was a gentleman and said that he was opposed to this, and here's why, and I said, "John, do you realize that this is approved? It's really here that we're, that's in discussion?" And I'm not sure I got through. And I knocked on his door as well after I heard concern, and he unfortunately called me a liar and slammed the door in my face, and I felt that was probably better that I just left that alone. So they're opposed, for sure. The rest of my neighborhood, like I said, I have pictures, I'm set back. I don't think they'd be happy no matter what I did, to be honest with you. I, you know, we get back to the, to the things that you have asked us to make sure that, you know, we, I don't think it's a detriment to the environment. I don't believe two feet is substantial. Two feet, that's, I think, what we're asking here, and, you know, I don't, I don't think it has a adverse effect, it's not structural. I don't think it changed the character of the neighborhood at all. But it's subjective, I understand.
Are there any other board members wishing to be heard?
Yeah, I've got just a couple of questions. Do you have, now, Mr., is it Fish you said?
Correct.
Mr. Fish lives to the left side, and he's objected to the entire fence, you said, or to just that one section?
Well, if I understand correctly, today he's only allowed to object for the variance of the two feet.
You said earlier, you talked to him, and he objected to the fence. Is he?
I believe that he may have been confused because he was concerned that I'm, he said to me that I'm, which is not true, I'm applying for a permit for the fence after the fence is installed.
Okay.
And so I tried to explain to him that this is part of the building permit, which, by the way, I did have the right building information posted in my window as directed to during the pool building process.
I got it.
Okay.
Tell me, on the left side where Mr. Fish lives, do you have any doors to the side of the house?
No, I have windows.
Now, let's go on the other side. Do you have any doors to the side of there?
Yes, sir.
To the yard? So what is, the house is there, you have a door that goes out to the driveway or where the basketball is?
Yes, sir. So where the driveway is, is a two-car garage, and there is a door adjacent to one of the garage doors. So right here, in my driveway, comes up from the road, comes all the way up here, and then I have a one bay, one nine-foot bay, one nine-foot bay, and a standard, you know, thirty-six-foot door. Right here, there's a door.
Okay. And how far is that door in the back to the house?
How far is the door in the back?
You said you have forty feet of fence, right?
Yes, the four.
Compared to the forty feet, how far is that door?
That door is probably a good forty feet away.
So, so that door is the back, to the back of your house?
No, no, sir. The door is the side door, right here.
Okay.
So this fence comes out across the yard. My back of my yard is right here, this is the pool. This is a patio, and I have a back slider.
So you should know, then, you're measuring the forty feet, that's not to the back of your house, that's to, to the back of your house would be less than forty feet.
From the back corner of my house, the first panel is eight feet, and I counted five panels, and I got to forty feet.
Okay, so you do have forty feet.
Yes, sir.
Now, are you willing to reduce that to four feet on that forty feet?
Of course. If the board denies my request to approve the extra two feet, I am willing to cut it down and use a chainsaw. I'd rather not, but.
So you know, you already have two neighbors, they're not happy.
Correct.
And the code, we don't allow six feet, you know, and only to the back of the house. And you seem like to have a big property to the back of the house, and you have the six-foot fence. I just want to make sure that you're willing to reduce it to four feet.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other board members wishing to be heard? Anyone, I was gonna say, in the crowd, but the word is audience, it's getting a little late, wishing to be heard on this matter?
There's a mic up here. Yeah, I'll return it. Madam Chair, members of the board, I won't beat a dead horse, and I'm not here to cast aspersions on Mr. Capiello, who I don't know, seems like a nice gentleman. My name is Michael Basile, I'm an attorney. My office is at fourteen thirty Balltown Road. My client is Dr. Keen and his wife, and that statement's already been read. And I have the original and the pictures to hand up, if you'd like the originals, I think there are more pictures. But the long and the short of it is, Dr., the doctor is a retired obstetrician, he has a disability, he likes to look out his house, out his window, and he does have a speech issue in terms of, English is not his native language. I have trouble understanding him. So whatever communication occurred, there may have been some misunderstanding, I don't know, I wasn't there. But I didn't hear Mr. Capiello say that he understood that Dr. Ken was agreeing to six feet. My client didn't understand it was gonna be six feet. And if you look at where he is on the downslope, he's the most affected. The two neighbors, as was said, on the same side of the street are opposed. The opposite side of the street, they're away from it, they're in favor. But it's like looking up a mountain, it turns a hill into a mountain for his viewing. He said he likes to look at deer, he can't see them anymore. That two feet doesn't make a difference. That two feet does make a difference. We understand that four feet is allowed, and that if the variance is not granted, the fence will stay, and it will be four feet. But that does make a difference from where he's situated on the downslope. Looking at the criteria in the ordinance, it, to my view anyway, it doesn't seem to ring any of the criteria. Um, it's an undesirable change. The neighbors are opposed to it on the sides abutting this particular property. It was self-created, as has been admitted here tonight. It affects the two neighbors on that same side. Uh, I think it could be a substantial change. First off, two feet is half of the four feet allowed, so that's substantial. And if this is allowed, then why not the next guy, and the next guy, and the next guy? So it could be the harbinger of a substantial change if it's not one already. Uh, and it can be ameliorated simply by, whether it's a chainsaw or whatever it is, taking down the two feet. So I don't think it meets any of the criteria, uh, in the ordinance. Um, and it will just open the door to others, you know, doing the same thing. Although this is unwitting, uh, someone else could just come in and say, there's precedent. And we heard in the first case tonight, there was an applicant looking for something similar. I don't think he put his up yet, but it's the same type of variance that was sought there. So, um, for all those reasons, um, I will, uh, just stop there and say, I don't have anything else to say, I'm happy to answer questions, but I think it's already been said in terms of what my client's position is. Thank you.
Well, um, sir, I just want to make sure that your clients understand that, um, there's only a portion of it that, that is requesting the variance, and that, you know, a, a portion of it is allowed to be there as six feet. So we're only looking at a portion, uh, that would need to be moved to four.
Yeah, and if he doesn't understand that, that will be the law. So understand, we understand that, uh, the only thing that will be allowed or not allowed is the portion that's in question. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any other questions from the audience? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna make a motion to deny this variance. The applicant, uh, made some mistakes with the fence without knowing that, uh, he, he can't put a six-foot fence, and, uh, he was just trying to, trying to make it work with the neighbors, but unfortunately, it, it wasn't, uh, a good reason to do it, especially that our town does not allow six feet, uh, from the back to the front of the house. It did cause undesirable, uh, change in the neighborhood. Uh, we do have, uh, many people, uh, that are to the town complaining of the six-foot, uh, uh, heights. It's a problem. Is it substantial? It is substantial. Uh, and like I said, for our board, uh, very rare we approve a two-foot, uh, uh, fence from the front to the back of the house. Would it have any adverse physical or environment? Uh, again, uh, this will cause problems. It's causing problems, there's complaints. And like I said, even though the applicant is still willing to, uh, to reduce it to four feet, and he can do that. Whether alleged difficulty is self-created, the applicant did, did admit it was self-created, and it is. And Madam Chair, for all these reasons, I'm gonna deny this motion and, uh, for this variance.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second that, for all the reasons stated.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes, but I want the applicant to, to understand your, your previously approved six-foot fences is good to go, and you're good for a four-foot fence for these two sections. Unfortunately, as you've seen here tonight already, this board is, is just, we just don't grant six-foot fences unless there's some tremendously unusual safety concern or situation. I am sympathetic to your cause, but that's kinda, it is what it is, so, thanks.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Trimarky?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Daley?
No.
Mr. Green?
On the motion to deny, I vote in favor. I want to note, uh, in particular, as you're facing the house looking to the left, to some people, the fence definitely, uh, changes, uh, the character of the immediate neighborhood. So for the reasons stated by others in that reason, I vote yes. On the motion to deny the variance.
Mr. Hoke?
Yes.
Chairperson McGuinness?
I vote yes.
Can I just interject real quick? Um, Mr. Daley, I just wanted to, I, I don't know if I misunderstood, but I just want to clarify, you seconded the motion?
Yeah.
And then you voted no on the motion that you seconded? Was that supposed to be a yes?
Oh, yeah, I got confused, okay. Thank you.
So it was a yes vote on the motion?
So I'll reverse my, my vote.
I thought so, but I just wanted to make sure.
I'm sorry.
So the motion is approved. Your, your variance was denied. I want to thank you for your patience. You sat through a very long meeting. Um, I want to, um, commend you on your outreach to your neighbors, and I also would like to thank you for being willing to, um, go down to the four feet. Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn, please? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night, everybody.
You also.